Okay, we're gonna call this meeting back to order. And just to make things more interesting, we're gonna actually move a couple items around because I have an attorney that's on the clock being paid and I know everybody's time is valuable, and I have somebody that needs to go to work. And a commissioner has to leave, there's a commissioner that has to leave at 1:00 for a family emergency. So I'm trying to accommodate everybody as best as I can and still give everybody a chance to speak. You know, since you're already here, I'm sure you don't mind just waiting just a little bit longer, and for that I apologize, but I'm trying to accommodate everybody's emergencies, work schedules, et cetera. So with that, we're gonna move to item J2. And these items should be fairly quick, they shouldn't take forever. I'd like, should we have staff introduce this first? Who put this on the agenda? Tad? Okay. We'll let Tad speak first on the item and then...
Good morning, Commissioner. This is a request for the Board to consider the special magistrate's recommendation to reduce the accrued fine from $26,460 down to $6,974 and release the lien upon payment in full for a code enforcement case at 6576 Crest Avenue, Cocoa, Florida. This violation or the code enforcement case was for some unpermitted work, installation of a culvert in the county right-of-way. The property was in violation from December 2003 to April 2013. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them for you.
Okay, are you Ada Yeager?
Yes, Ada Avilas Yeager, yes.
Okay, can I get your address, please?
Yes, it is 4923 North Pine Avenue in Winter Park, Florida, 32792.
Okay.
Okay, and the owner, the new owner of this property is James Woodling, and the property is 6576 Crest Avenue in Cocoa, Florida, 32927. And Mr. Woodling is requesting that the Board approve the finding and the recommendation of the county commissioner. He's also asking if he could pay this in six months. The amount of the reduction was $6,974, of which I believe $539 has already been paid, which is the enforcement cost. And so Mr. Woodling is respectfully requesting that the Board approve the recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner Loebert, did you have questions for her?
Question for staff, if I may. With respect to this, am I correct in saying that the lien that was imposed on this property was recorded at the time that it was sold to the new owner?
Yes, the lien was recorded on September 20 of 2007.
Which was prior to the sale to the new owner, such that if they were to look in the OR, they could've found it?
Yes, sir.
And then one other item, the new owner requested a reduction prior to going to the magistrate, what was the requested reduction? Was it down to zero, or what was the amount that they asked to have lowered to?
Yes, just to zero.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna basically defer to Commissioner Pritchett, as I believe this is in her district, but that said, I just wanted to mention for folks in my district, I think requesting a reduction to zero is a little bit extreme. So if there is some extenuating circumstance, you may want to request something other than zero in D2, just because it's something that seems so extreme, especially given that the lien in this case and in many other cases is available, should someone just do the basic due diligence of going to the clerk's site and looking through the OR. So I'm gonna do what she does on this one, but in my district, I don't know that I'd be as inclined to be as receptive, given the circumstances.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am. So you guys are willing to pay the magistrate $6,974, you're just requesting for a six-month period of time to pay it in?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that...
Yeah, we do payment plans, they can set up a payment plan with us.
Okay, well, that was gonna be my recommendation today anyway, so, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I guess this would be for counsel, if that's okay. Thank you, I just looked through public record, and it looks like this was purchased, what, in 2013, is that correct?
That's correct.
So then I went back on the property appraiser's site to see how much the property was worth according to the appraised value, and that was $70,000. As Commissioner Loebert has brought to light, and that was one of the questions here, the purchaser was aware that there was a lien of $20-some thousand on the piece of property when they purchased it?
Yes, that was revealed in the title search.
Okay. And I believe that is correct, because the sale price of the piece of property, according to public record, is $20,000. So it is my contention, and help me if I'm wrong, that when the individual purchased that, that value was taken into consideration to get a decreased price on the sale. There is no way that you can pay a quarter of the appraised price with there not being any type of extenuating circumstances, the extenuating circumstances being the $26,000. I still think the individual got a pretty darn good deal, if taking that in consideration, they paid $45,000 or $46,000 for a piece of property that the person paid that was valued at $70,000. The question is this, why should they get any reduction if, when they purchased it, they knew that there was a lien on it and they got a reduced value?
Okay, well, let me answer that. First of all, when he purchased the property, the property had a lot of problems. I don't know if you're aware, but the previous owner, which is Knute Cooper, he died on the property, and this man, I believe, was found approximately two weeks after his death. And he had water running in his house, I believe he was somewhere in the kitchen, and for two straight weeks, this property had water damage. The property had a lot of mold, there was a lot of issues with the home with regards to the floor, all the water seeped in through the walls. Mr. Woodling has a tremendous amount of expenses bringing this property up to where it is today. It has taken him several, several years. If I need to provide that, I'm sure he has those records. Not only, the first thing that he did do, of course, was the driveway, because that was one of the things he was very well aware of, that was a lien against the property. He, of course, not only did the driveway, but he also expended a tremendous amount of money that cost, actually, I think it's approximately about $40,000 of expenses that he can probably provide in bringing this house up to livable, because it took almost three years for his family to be able to move into the property. Now, the reason he's asking for the reduction was simply because he did take, you know, immediate action of the lien deficiency issue. I read through the records, and that particular problem with the driveway actually had caused no harm to anyone, this was not anything that was gonna harm anyone. I believe that's why the county kept the violation there for so many years, simply because it was not going to pose any grave threat to the public safety. It was basically returning, you know, the right-of-way that was originally there, but the fact that Mr. Woodling spent, you know, a tremendous amount of money to fix this property, I mean, if you would have seen the property, and I believe he has pictures of the conditions of this property, you would probably understand why he had a reduced amount of this. There also, he doesn't have it with him today, because we weren't expecting this, but the beneficiaries of the property also held a small mortgage for approximately two years, and I believe it was about $25,000. So on top of the 25 and the 20, and the at least $40,000 of expenses that he spent on bringing this house to livable after almost three years, that's why he's requesting that you approve the recommendation of the general magistrate.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple questions off your explanation. You said we need to take into consideration that there was a deceased person in that, so the individual bought this and then found out that there was a deceased person in the house, or?
No.
I'm lost.
No, he purchased the property from the estate, from an estate.
Knowing that there was all this mold and all this other stuff, I assume they did their due diligence before they purchased it?
Sure, yes.
So I don't think that's helping your argument that that is why it was so low. So the second part is that you mentioned, you mentioned why the fine wasn't taken off, and you insinuated that it was public health. I think we can, I'll punt that over to Tad, but the reason the fine wasn't taken off generally is because it wasn't paid.
Correct.
That's generally why we don't take off fines, is because they're not... And then the third, I didn't find that mortgage, I did some work on this one, and I did not find that mortgage. Can you tell me where that was recorded?
The mortgage, I don't believe, was recorded, okay? But if you need to, we can probably get a copy of it for you, but it was up to the beneficiaries to record that mortgage. So I don't have any information on that, but if you need to, I can probably try to get it from the homeowner at this time. But what I'm mentioning about the actual damage to the, you know, whatever the culvert that was in violation, I don't think that there was any bad faith on the part of the original homeowner, I believe it's just that maybe it was an affordable thing. But I do, you know, wanna suggest that as soon as Mr. Woodling purchased the property, that was one of the first things he did. The property, he knew that there was a lot of damage, of course he did the due diligence, there's no argument about that, but he did take every step to make this house livable, and it took a tremendous amount of money to get this house to be livable. And I would ask to take that into consideration as well.
Anything further, Commissioner Tobias?
No, I appreciate the time, but when the purchaser bought this, they knew there was a $26,000 lien on it, hence they got it for a depreciated price, and yet, for years, they decided not to pay that. And now they're asking for, initially asking for a reduction to nothing, I don't think that's fair. I don't think this is an extenuating circumstance that even the recommendation of the special magistrate is fair on this one, but, so, should it come back to the magistrate, I'm gonna vote no, but it is gonna dovetail into something I'd like to discuss at the end of this, so we can probably mitigate these type of occurrences coming to the Board.
When you came forward with a zero in it, there was no way I was gonna agree to that. I do hear your point, Commissioner Tobias, and I, so here's my struggle, is us trying to come up to what would be a reasonable amount, as the only thing I know to fall back on right now is the magistrate's amount, which if you hadn't had a lien on the property, I think you would've just paid the fine. So I think moving forward, I am probably gonna make a motion to go ahead and do the magistrate's recommendation on this, and see if there's a second. But Commissioner Tobias, I do hear ya, and maybe we need to come up with some process of what we think should be an appropriate amount on these types of items, if we don't go with the magistrate's recommendation. I'll make a motion to a...
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, and a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Loebert?
Actually, let's take that off, it's already been addressed by Commissioner Smith's second.
Okay. Any further discussion? And I will just say that, you know, this isn't the ideal reduction. I understand why you would ask for zero, because you asked for zero hoping to meet somewhere in the middle, and I'm sure that's why he was, I'm sure he expected to pay something.
Absolutely.
I don't think that anybody in their right mind would think that going in front of a magistrate for a fine reduction would get you to zero.
Right, absolutely.
So I'll support this, it doesn't make me 100% comfortable, but I think, I believe, you know, the goal always should be to rectify the property. Now, this circumstance was unique, in the fact that, you know, the lien was made aware of, or the buyer was made aware of the lien, but I'll support it today.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tobias voting nay. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a request. I spoke with Mr. Cawkins about these cases, and was surprised to learn that this process here was not required by state statute. The requests for fine reductions have reached the point where I believe it is time to take a look at our process. Now that we have made it our regular practice to override the recommendations of the special magistrate, myself included, the current process has become unfair to staff as well as the applicants. Every time one of these items comes up, we have to make decisions based on a few pages in our packets. Unlike the special magistrates, who don't issue subpoenas in these cases or take the testimony under oath. Meanwhile, by the time it has come to us, staff has already gone through the process of representing our interest to the special magistrate, including doing the research and making its arguments. At a time when our meeting lengths are exceeding six hours, again, partially my fault, partially the individual to my direct right, who will go nameless, are we going to ask staff to come to the meetings fully prepared to essentially redo the special magistrate's hearing? Even if it is the case, why are we having a special magistrate at all? Once these cases are heard by the special magistrate, due process has been served. So here's my motion, request staff to develop options to streamline the code enforcement fine reduction process by amending ordinance and the rules of the special magistrate, including converting special magistrate recommendations to the final determinations, while preserving the party's ability to seek judicial review if they so desire. That would be chairman.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Loebert. Any further discussion?
Can I hear that again?
Okay, sorry. I know that was a lot of stuff, so we have to provide due process to all these individuals. The due process is met once they hit the special magistrate. Staff has to do a heck of a lot of work to get from the special magistrate to us, we're not under any statutory obligation to do that. So the motion is just requesting that staff bring back other options to us to streamline this process, so we don't go through, and there may be other options out there, but just to make sure they're not redoubling their efforts and we're making arbitrary decisions without a full amount of facts. So I'll read the motion again, but that's the emphasis of it.
My question is, how, what do you have in mind, how can they streamline it to save time?
Right off the bat, it never has to come to us. There's no staff, there's no, and that's just the first, there may be six other ones, but all this is doing is asking staff to bring suggestions back to us. If we find we don't like any of the suggestions, we can continue with the status quo.
I don't have a problem with that either, I just want us to be careful, because sometimes it looks like this, the magistrate's recommendation is arbitrary, like it just looks like, oh, they reduced it by X percentage, or they, and that may be what, you know, how they justify the reduction, but perhaps it's our fine structure that's egregious to even have to have the magistrate reduce it to such a large amount. So I'm not saying that we go and rehash, like, all code enforcement fines, but sometimes that's why people don't rectify their stuff, is because we're fineing them $50 a day, or depending on what it is, and maybe that's an area that we probably need to look at, so we won't need the special magistrate so much. Yes?
With regard to what you said about, I don't know all the circumstances in every single case, but there's a situation in my neighborhood where there's a gentleman that's been very negligent with the care of his house, he lives in Tampa, and he's had a squatter living there for over two years, and to the point where code enforcement went out and the gentleman had no electric, and the squatter is known to the owner in Tampa, they went to high school together, and it's, it's, the guy has had, there's no proof, but there's an awful lot of suspicion, there's drugs going in and out of the house with people in the all-hours of the day, and strange people coming into the street, knocking on wrong doors, asking for Alex, and Alex is the guy that lives in that house. So what I'm getting at here is, the code enforcement shut the house down because there was no electric, without electric, there's no water, because it's on a well, so it's pretty disgusting, and this has gone on several times, and this house has had a $100 a day fine since two years, and it's still there, and nothing is being done, so...
But I'm talking about the guy that has a down fence and back, and his money's a little tight, and they don't get around to it, or it's an old lady who has overgrown grass, and I'm not saying, we don't have, like, an extremely crazy proactive code enforcement that just goes out to hurt people, but at the same time, I don't want people to ever be in the situation where they, they're opting not to address it or repair it, because the fines are just out of their reach. I've heard that story one too many times, not just with the county, but with the city.
But the other side of that coin is, if you'd made it $1 a day or $10 a day, they would ignore it, because it isn't a big deal. So at least $50, $50 a day or $100 a day does get their attention. So that's the other side of the coin, so, but I understand what you're saying. So I like your idea, Commissioner Tobias.
Okay. With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I'm sorry, there's one more item, but it should be fast, I apologize, guys, it won't be this long. I'll make sure, I'll cut 'em off if I have to. All right, so we're gonna, item J4. Sorry, I would've noticed before, but I found this out a little bit later, that we were gonna hear this item now. I don't think I have any cards on it. Sorry, Mr. Abate, to spring that on ya.
No problem. This particular item is for federal lobbying services. In the item, we've provided the Board several options. The current federal lobbyist, Eddie Pauli, has been the federal lobbyist for the Board since, I believe, 2003. He has submitted to central services that he would continue under the same terms and conditions if the Board so chose, that he has been operating on since the inception of the contract. The Board in the past has agreed to do that, so that is one of the options before you. A second option would be for us to go out in an RFP process, and a third option would be whether or not the Board wants to continue with any federal lobbyist services at all. We do have, and I did do a survey of staff that was involved, and there was a long history during that period of time of the various earmarks that he's been involved in to assist the county, especially when it dealt with the beach renourishment, but a lot of other areas, and also areas of involvement, involving getting federal permitting expedited. But that's up to the Board, and we're ready to proceed as the Board desires on this item.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of my questions yesterday, when you guys brought this up, because I don't know them, I think I met them one time in my office, so this is no, nothing that I have enough expertise on, but I asked you some questions, which got my attention, and one thing I asked you was, is his services saving us some money? And county manager?
I would say, over time, there's been substantial in the tens of millions of dollars that have been brought to the county for various earmarks over time from the federal government that he's been involved in.
Okay, and then something else that I asked about, he hasn't changed the amount that he's charged us over the period of time, either, he hasn't even cared about the CPI index, but, so I thought that was significant. So if you guys are comfortable, I'm probably fine with this, I just wanted to give that information, because those are the questions I asked of staff.
Commissioner Tobias?
I'm gonna go with number two, which is the RFP, and I will ask, you know, Commissioner Pritchett, I agree, I could not pick Mr. Pauli out of a lineup. In fact, the only time that he personally contacted my office, and we looked this up, was asking if I would show up for a fundraiser at Congressman Posey's fundraiser, which is a major no-no, to call a legislative office and ask for something that is on the campaign. In fact, if that was state, there would be some serious ramifications. But this would follow up on the question that was asked to Mr. Abate. Apparently, Mr. Pauli potentially had brought us, or helped us receive money, is there any indication that anyone else could've done, provided us with that same or better service?
I really, I really couldn't answer that, whether or not someone else would've had success, those are somewhat subjective, I would venture to say so, I don't think I'm in a position to really say, would someone else have been able to do more or less?
Okay. And I'll give you my points for the RFP, I didn't think we'd need to do it, but I'll do that. I contacted a congressman that I used to work with, who was a state representative at one time, and asked him if he had any idea who Mr. Pauli was, and I heard crickets. And he's now in the minority, but he was in the majority before the Democrats took And finally, I would expect some of the stuff that is coming out of even this meeting right now would've come from Mr. Pauli himself, the Space Command stuff, I would've expected that that would've not come out of a commission office, but that would've come out of our Washington lobbyist stuff. So for all these reasons, I would make a motion, subject for discussion, for option two, which is to issue an RFP for a federal lobbying service and appoint a selection negotiating committee consisting of Ian Gold and Scott Nelson, Matt Wallace, or other designees. Their recommendation is then brought back to the Board for consideration and final approving, knowing that this may, you know, Mr. Pauli may be the right direction to go, and an RFP certainly will determine that, so that's why I'd like to make a motion for option two.
I'll second for discussion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, and a second by Commissioner Loebert. And next on the Board is Commissioner Smith.
Well, I have met Eddie Pauli numerous times, he has been very active in my four-and-a-half years with the Commission, he's helped me with Congressman Posey's office, and Senator, getting audience with Senators Rubio and Nelson. He's been up there doing this for a long time, he knows what buttons to push and who to reach out to when you need stuff, and I know that he's been very, very successful in getting monies from and through our elected officials up there for, like, beach renourishment, et cetera. So I would give him a recommendation, but I don't really oppose going out to RFP either, because he's been doing it for a long time, and I think that if, given the opportunity to show us how effective he is to whoever has been suggested, I'm sure he can do quite well.
Commissioner Loebert?
Question for staff, if I may, Mr. Abate. It may well be that this is the correct way to go, I'm not sure yet, I think, you know, it seems, at least from staff's perspective, based on the conversations we've had, that he has more than earned the money that he's charged, but my question is, were we to go to RFP, do you think that the emergence of prices or quotes that are substantially higher than what he's quoted us might cause him to reevaluate the quote that he's provided us as being too low?
That's pretty difficult to tell, you know, for me to predict that, if I found you that, I probably wouldn't still be working.
I just wonder, because I have no idea what lobbying services cost, so I'm relying on staff to give me some direction on this, I mean, does it strike you as something being markedly below what market charges, or does it strike you being somewhat in line, I just have no idea?
I would, I would venture to say, without wanting to influence in any way what that RFP would be, but it would not surprise me if there was substantially higher charges in light of a few charges that I'm aware of, that other jurisdictions are paying for federal lobbyist services. So I think the fact that our charge has not increased since 2003 is indicative that it is below the current market value.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And I honestly think that sometimes it's difficult to tell, you know, you can provide a list, and I'm not saying he's unethical...
You know, you can provide a list, and I'm not saying he's unethical by any means. I think he's a very nice man. I've met him once, and I think I've talked to him once. It's very easy to take credit for items that already have the support of the legislature. I'm not saying that's what he's doing, but I've seen it done before. As far as, I would just, you know, ask staff if the commission approves that we go ahead and look for an average, and that way we can give a range. And I don't know what commissioners' thoughts are. If this is our federal lobbyist pushing our policy, perhaps maybe, you know, the commission can choose a board member to sit as part of the selection committee. Wouldn't that make sense? If he's up there representing what our policy or what our, you know, priorities are?
We'll be happy to modify it any way the board sees fit.
Do you guys want a range, or do you want them to use an average? Any suggestions? You made the motion to go to RFP. Are you okay with that? Or do you want a range of salary? Because I don't think $48,000 is substantially lower, just from what I can recall.
I would, my suggestion, and I've been on the other side of this clearly, is we'd probably want as many responses back as possible.
Right.
So I don't know, I mean, obviously, if someone's asking for hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're probably not going to go in that direction. But certainly, it would be nice to see what type of services that, you know, I wanted it as broad as possible.
Okay.
So that would be my two cents.
All right, I'll support this. I mean, like I said, I think Pauli Services has provided a good service, but there's no harm, and we would only be closing the door to other opportunities if we didn't at least look at what's out there.
And do you wanna, Madam Chair, do you want to select a board member to?
Oh, is there anybody that wants to be on there?
Mr. Tobias?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're the legislator, maybe.
So though I-
Or the former legislator of the House.
Though I have not received any funds from Mr. Pauli, I am, I do know a number of folks that do lobbying in Washington, DC. So certainly, I would disclose that, you know, when the time came. But I think it's probably best that I not be on that committee. I don't have anyone in mind, but I do know a number of lobbying firms that do work up there.
See, I thought that would be an advantage. Unless you're financially benefiting from them, I don't know how that could be harmful.
And I'm not financially, and you would find no checks come, but I'd be more than willing, you know, with the board's consideration.
What do you guys think?
But understand that that has happened, you know, that I do know a number of the players up there.
I agree with you.
That may be a good thing. You know, I mean, I'm not saying that you don't give other people a chance if you don't know them, but you know who's working hard up in Tallahassee.
As long as I've disclosed it, I'm more than willing, should you pick, should the board make that direction, I'm more than willing to sit on that committee.
What do you guys think? Commissioner Smith?
I think if you go and try and find out what an average is now, that would give us a good indication whether we want to go in a different direction. Like I said, I think that since Eddie Pauli's been doing this for as long as he has, obviously, previous commissions, and me personally, I think he's done a really good job. And if we find that he's not out of range, I had one lobbyist reach out to me two years ago when I was in DC, and they offered their services at substantially more money than what we're paying Eddie Pauli.
But if they have to come in and they have to essentially bid it, they may be willing to do this to get their foot in the door, especially if Mr. Pauli's been here for a long time. But are you okay with Commissioner Tobias being our representative on that board? Commissioner Pritchett?
I am, and Mr. Pauli can also submit.
Oh, no, I mean submitting on the selection committee as far as, yeah.
Yes, I'm good with that. I'm saying he could also put in a board, too.
Correct, yeah.
And it might even get him a little pay raise if he doesn't think it is, so.
Right. All right, that sounds good. So Commissioner Tobias, are you willing?
I'm just reading now, I don't know, Ian Golden is on that, and, you know, he's a better dresser than me, so I am, you know. But short of that, as long as he doesn't outstage me on that, I'd love to sit on that.
Okay, great. So do we have to modify that, or is it, can it just be said?
I understand that the motion will include that Commissioner Tobias will sit in on that selection committee.
Okay, so is that?
With your indulgence, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Lober, do you?
I'm happy with that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, now the big item. Okay, item, item I3. I guess we're gonna do a very short discussion here, because then maybe you'll have some more information before your comments. It was requested by Commissioner that, you know, we talk about this before we go to public comment. And that way, you'll be armed with more information when you come up and speak. It's actually a good thing. Commissioner Lober?
If I may, and I guess if we can get the PowerPoint rolling here. And I will throw the mean attorney, two seats to my left, slightly under the bus. I'll pull her out. I won't let her get run over all the way. But she had made some suggestions that resulted in me modifying my presentation from some items that would have made it a little bit more lively and interesting, so I ask you to bear with me here. All right, let's see if this thing works. I've never used this before. So I wanted to share with you all some emails that I've received from Brevard residents. Some of them were really productive with respect to this item, some were very unproductive. And the basic goal is to help constituents understand how messages are likely to be received. I've seen both with the CSC issue and also with this issue, there've been a lot of counterproductive attempts at communication. It's not intended to be condescending, it's really just intended to help everyone from wasting their own time, so that when they reach out to anyone sitting up here, they have as much impact as they possibly can. So I've got one here, and it basically says, "Dear Commissioner Lober, please consider the weight of scientific evidence." It goes on and talks about thanking me for my efforts in researching the item. I'm just gonna kind of go a little faster on account of keeping this moving. But this is a wonderful email. Obviously, the intention's proper. Individual may not agree with me. It appears that's the case. And it leads me to be open to considering whatever they say in this email or any other email or contact they may have with my office. Another email basically says they disagree with my vote, but it goes on, let me see if I can move this thing. I'm sorry, this screen is just way, way too dark. Yeah, it's real blurry. But it basically talks about things that they believe contribute to the decline of the lagoon, goes on asking me to more or less go along with what the COC had recommended. Again, they respectfully disagreed with me. I have absolutely no qualms. I'm happy they sent me the message. It was something that I gave consideration to. And even though this person, if you look, it says, let's see if I can do this here, Indian Harbor Beach, that's outside of my district. I don't care, I'm still happy to get the input, even if they're outside of my district. But that's the way to approach folks, because I'm happy to continue conversing with this person. I'm happy to continue setting up any sort of appointments they may wish to set up in the office. Now, we're gonna kind of ease into some of the less productive comments, starting with one that's pretty innocuous. So I got one basically saying, "Please don't vote to redirect the half-cent sales tax fund from the Indian River Lagoon. Lagoon cleanup is of the utmost importance and voted for by the constituents." I agree with that. That's great, but the issue is, I don't know what they specifically consider, as they put in the subject here, misappropriation. I don't know if they think what I've been up to has been misappropriation, or if they agree with it or don't understand it. It just, it doesn't really give me enough to go on. So we've got another item here where the individual indicated they object to making changes, and they talk about assuming conclusions that aren't based on scientifically supported facts, and it asks not to have decisions based on emotions, politics, or lack of knowledge. So I don't know what specific conclusions they're referring to. When you have ambiguity in something like that, I don't know what they're unhappy with, or if there is anything in particular they're unhappy with. And I will tell you, the only thing that I thought was kind of negative in this email was talking about making decisions based upon emotions, politics, or lack of knowledge, because it's insinuated by saying that, that that's exactly what we're doing, and I can assure you it's not. And otherwise, apart from that one item, it really was a decent message, but that just attracts from it, and makes me less inclined to work with that person. So now we're gonna get into some that are a little bit more fun, and I say fun somewhat facetiously. This is one from Satellite Beach, and in short part, again, in the interest of time, it says, "I'm a resident, and I'm a voter, and I will be watching your actions closely." So I don't know what's meant by watching my actions. I implicitly think I got it. But again, the author is not a constituent of mine, and without the implied threat, everything that preceded that particular threat would have been better received. And I told you, it ramps up as I go through a few of these, so bear with me. We've got another one here talking about not-yet-planned Palm Bay infrastructure projects. I know our chairwoman had mentioned that earlier, and I think she said 50 to 70 emails you received? We were in the same ballpark, plus we had a slew of calls. And I didn't by any means put anywhere near the entirety of emails that I received on this issue in this little slideshow. But this was something that was surprising to me, because it hadn't even entered my thought process prior to seeing this. So it basically says, "If you do this, I will not vote for you at the next election." That's pretty direct. I guess I can appreciate someone being direct. But here's the thing, I looked up where this person lived just online on Google, and they're not a constituent of mine, so unless they're gonna commit voter fraud, they're not gonna be voting for me anyway. Moving on, and some of these are a little bit similar, so I'm not gonna go through line by line. This one now, instead of just a Palm Bay infrastructure project, or a not-yet-planned Palm Bay infrastructure project, talks about road repair in Palm Bay. I can tell you, I'm as likely to support road repair on the moon or on Neptune as I am in Palm Bay out of sorrel funds. It's never been in consideration. And, oh, the other nice thing is, it's not a constituent of mine. So looking at another one here, we've got, again, the reference to infrastructure in Palm Bay. Apparently, there's something that we haven't publicly shared. I don't know what that is, because the agenda item has been on there timely, it's been noticed, and nothing's been hidden. Apparently, I'm deceiving voters, and I'm un-American, which is interesting, because I thought I was pretty darn well American. And this individual said, "They may remember," I'm sorry, "they will, whoever we is, we will remember your actions when reelection comes around." But here's the thing, they're not a constituent of mine, so they can remember it when reelection comes around, but they can't vote for me or against me unless they buy property in my district and move there. I will say, and it made me feel better about redacting this person's name, they did after I informed them that their material that they relied on was misguided, that it was basically derived from fantasy. They did send a really good apology, one of the best I've ever seen or heard from anyone, even from the time I was a little kid. And we did have a very productive conversation after that, where we were, you know, we were able to talk about what the actual suggestions and proposals were, as opposed to some invented, basically, a boogeyman story that just got people riled up. So just a few more, I promise you. So here's another one talking about, again, same sort of language, not-yet-planned Palm Bay infrastructure projects, talks about not adequately informing the residents. This one adds, "We mostly ignored what the scientists have recommended." Talks about, apparently, the motivation for the three of us on this side of the table supposedly is to help our political backers' infrastructure programs. And going on, it says, "It's not in keeping with what the expert scientists," I guess there are two types of scientists, the experts and the non-experts, "and all of the county's voters and taxpayers had in mind." So this is a little long, but bear with me here. So again, I'll skip the Palm Bay part, I think we already addressed that. I don't know which scientists they consider experts. There are scientists who agree and scientists who disagree with the plan. And as far as political backers, I spent over $150,000 of my own money to run for this position. I don't have political backers. My dog did more for me in this election than probably anyone that anyone could think was a political backer. It's also incredibly presumptuous, and this came up in a prior meeting where someone did essentially the same thing on a similar topic with the lagoon. This individual feels that they have the right to speak on behalf of all expert scientists and all county voters and taxpayers. It's ridiculous. They don't, they absolutely don't. It's, you know, it's a ridiculous argument. And then I did like, just as a quick nod here, see seeing the Senator Rick Scott, and then also our Governor DeSantis. And then I promise we're getting to the end here. So again, talking same sort of language, mostly ignored what scientists have suggested, talks about now that apparently we're intentionally stalling the dispensing of these funds, talking about these fictitious political backers, which no one can name for obvious reasons. And again, it talks about speaking on behalf of all of the county's voters and taxpayers. This person is from Melbourne, I was able to determine that. I don't have any portion of my district in Melbourne. And it's the same exact language as the prior slide, and basically, what I'm saying here is that this misinformed and easily duped author is the constituent, and they basically, they got this information from somewhere. So this is a better email, where they're asking about infrastructure in Palm Bay, but they start out with, "Is it true? Please let me know if it's true or it's a rumor." That's great. You know, I don't have a problem with people asking me something that's far-fetched or that they may not have evidence of, but ask me. Don't, you know, don't accuse me of supporting a position that I don't hold. And then this one, I like the brevity of it. It's definitely much more concise than I can ever be. Talks about using the half-cent sales tax for anything but the lagoon will result in a vote for my opponent in the next election. Sincerely, I say winner, winner, chicken dinner. This person's not a constituent of mine. So the trend that I've noticed is that those threatening me with their votes aren't entitled to my votes. Maybe this individual will just vote fraudulently, I don't really know. Be that as it may. So I've got another one here saying that they will actively work against me in my next reelection bid. But they start out with, "If what I have read is correct." Had they taken the tact of the prior individual two slides back saying, "Is this correct?" That's great, but to approach someone with that, actively working against them in their reelection bid, where the vast majority, if not all of these folks, aren't constituents with these hollow threats, it's not the way to sway me to be more inclined to listen to you. And quite frankly, I don't know that you all should want to have an elected official that's gonna change their vote based on being threatened. That's pretty spineless, in my opinion. So another one, I'll skip, the same sort of thing, relative of the last author sent that. And then I did, I did redact nearly everyone's name, thanks to the mean attorney, but I did leave one family name left in there, and I'll tell you why. So we did get a call, this is from my staff, basically saying that they're opposed to misappropriating, and this was from the 25th. Opposed to misappropriating IRL funds thinks that the local politicians are crooks or behaving like crooks. Okay? That's definitely gonna lead to a productive discussion, maybe in the Twilight Zone or in the Outer Limits. This individual, Bill Delucia, and he's the only individual, along with a family member that has the same last name, who I did decide to name, and I'll tell you why in a moment, but please remember that last name. He called on the 22nd, so this is the first call that I believe we had in the office about this issue at 12:07, so basically right at noon. And he indicated that he objected to misappropriating the IRL projects to put into one municipality, Palm Bay, and that he was gonna call or email later. And Fritz in my office also shared with me that this individual said that we're gonna be receiving a lot of input or a lot of calls, essentially because the pot was stirred by this person. And I'll show you why that's important in a moment. I guess he wasn't satisfied with calling once, or calling once and encouraging other people to call and email and all that. So we got a call the same day, again, same individual, saying essentially the same thing, but that he called News 13. We'll try to get them at the meeting Tuesday. I don't see News 13, but, okay. Again, that's Mr. Belucia, or, I'm sorry, Delucia. So where did that rumor originate? Because I think it's fair, a lot of folks, and maybe some folks sitting here if they weren't apprised as to what reality happens to be, may be here based on some false premise of this nonexistent suggestion or thought to do something in Palm Bay with road repair. So a D4 constituent, and I don't blame Mr. Smith, Commissioner Smith over there, it's not him by any means, he's not the constituent, but a D4 constituent put on, what is it, Next Door, which is a social media app apparently, where you have to live in the intervening area, the nearby area, in order to even be able to see the post. I had someone who lived nearby send this to me. On the 23rd, basically the same exact text that was either copied and pasted verbatim or changed minimally. And I, you know, I wanted to make sure, before I blame this person, whose name you can see that I blanked out, I wanted to make sure they were really the originating source, or if you ever watched the zombie movies, or maybe for Madam Chair here in real life with the medical field, you look for patient zero. I was trying to find my patient zero, so who is the originator of this fantasy? So it was not this individual. So going here, and if you remember, I asked you to remember a particular last name, don't think it's a common one in Indian Atlantic, but we have Carol Delucia, who posted on the 22nd at 10:08 a.m. on Facebook, which from the best I can tell, and I can't guarantee you, was the original post, certainly as far back as I was able to track it, with all of this fantasy rumor. Then it was shared by an individual, and again, I didn't name anyone that wasn't, as best I could tell, as far back toward the chronological beginning as I could possibly find. It was shared onto Wake Up Coco Beach, and as you heard, our chairwoman had 50 to 70 calls, and I'm sure more emails on top of that. We had, probably in the same line, we might have had more or less, but right around there. This doesn't just waste our time, it wastes staff's time, and staff could be working on other constituent issues. That's why it's a big deal. Moving on here, and again, I just, the reason I point that out is if you hear something, I think you need to consider the source. And with that individual, unless someone's able to track it back farther than I've been able to, I would keep it in mind if that individual says something about what the folks up here are inclined to do or not do, because this, to me, would be a huge credibility hit. And I would be very disinclined to believe similar claims or similarly outlandish claims from that person in the future, or anyone with that particular last name. So moving on, what's the point of the slideshow? I want to help constituents learn how to productively contact commissioners. And the way to do that is, you're fine disagreeing. God bless you if you disagree. The reason we have five of us sitting up here is because disagreement is healthy. It's something that's productive. If you don't disagree, then, you know, I don't have the input that you otherwise would provide. And you're welcome to contact any of us, certainly my office, even if you're not my constituent, if you're in D4, or D3, or any of the other districts. I don't care. That's fine. Reach out to me. I'll meet with you. But some of the things that I don't think are productive are accusing people, contacting them in a nasty way, being standoffish. I had one individual threaten to, and I'll show you up here, threaten to call the police and then seek an injunction against me, because I responded on a social media page publicly to a public comment about me on this particular issue. That's insane. Later, I had actually a mugshot for this individual, but the mean attorney had me take that out. I did have that in there. So, they've had plenty more recent police interaction than I've ever had. And I don't see, if you all need to cuff me, you can come up. I won't resist, I promise, either of you all. Point is, we need to work together. I mean, when you're competitive, I can tell you, and I've said it before, coercing and threatening and posturing, it's not going to win anyone any points. If that's what you need to do for some optics within a particular group, or within, within a particular venue, that may be fine, but it's not going to sway anyone's votes up here, being bullied or threatened. And it shouldn't, because you really ought to have someone here that's got enough spine, for want of a better term, not to buckle under the pressure of being threatened. So, I want to, before we get into public comment, just let you know why, at least from my perspective, I had some concerns with the lagoon plan. And I promise, this part is much quicker than the last part. And I don't know that Commissioners Tobia or Isnardi feel the same way. Maybe they have different reasons on top of this. But for me, this was kind of the big item. There are problems with, in my mind, with the pounds nitrogen and pounds phosphorus being used as the sole criteria for determining what to do with the plan. And as I mentioned, when Representative Fine was here earlier, we had a sewage week, this past, sewage leak, I'm sorry, this past week, out of county pipes. We had raw sewage spilling out of those pipes and going into stormwater drains. And you all can guess where that goes to. It really, it's a pretty easy, pretty easy route to follow. Well, why did this happen? The answer is really simple. We have an aging sewer system. And much of it was placed decades ago. Some of it, when we were dealing with the Apollo program. And all this stuff has an expected lifespan. You know, none of it is intended to last centuries. This is stuff that's intended to last decades. And we're either at that point oftentimes, or past that point in other situations. So, there are variables, and what I want to get to is there are variables that are absolutely unknowable. And if any of you know the answers to this, please let me know what the lottery-winning numbers are, because, God, you would have to have them. We can't factor into a pounds nitrogen and pounds phosphorus-reliant plan when the next leak will be, because we don't know. We know that there will be one. Actually, we know that there will be one after another after another. But we don't know how many gallons at the next leak, which could be happening right now. But I'm not checking my email to see if a DEP notice is in there. It could be tomorrow, could be today and tomorrow, could be six weeks from now. I have no idea. I also don't know if it's 100 gallons that's going to be released, or 10,000, or over a million. It's unknowable what the extent of the leak is going to be. But we do know that the leaks will happen. And it's not unforeseeable, because we can foresee that with an aging infrastructure system, where we have these repeated leaks, it doesn't take someone that's brilliant to figure out that the same thing's going to continue happening unless we have a different approach. And I don't know the last little bit, I'm sorry, whether the leak is going to, the next leak is going to consist of completely untreated water or a mixture. I don't know. And the problem is, when you can't factor in those variables, it doesn't fit into a nice, clean equation of, "This is going to remove this many pounds of nitrogen." If we have a leak that releases seven digits' worth of gallons of effluent into the river, that equation has largely been rendered meaningless, at least for a period of months, if not longer. So, moving on, many of those folks who ignore infrastructure will absolutely be silent when we have the next inevitable leak, as they always are. I've never heard anyone approach me that's been opposed to using any of the sorrel funds for infrastructure, and say, "Gosh, that leak was, that was a bad leak. We really need to, we need to look at fixing that." I just haven't heard that. And it's enough. I know, as our chairwoman pointed out, I think it was the last meeting, it may have been the prior meeting. And I'm going to quote her in part here. "We have to stop," I'm sorry, "we have got to stop dumping crap into the lagoon." And she may have meant that figuratively, but I took that rather literally. "We really do need to stop putting crap into the lagoon. It's an environmental catastrophe that's waiting to happen." I've already talked about the aging lines. I think they need to be inspected and fixed immediately, not five years out, or 20 years out. It needs to happen as soon as, logistically, possible. Our sewer plants, and I'm going to show you some photos from one of my sewer plant tours that I went on with staff not too long ago. Our sewer plants are not resilient enough oftentimes to sustain a tough storm, but that can be fixed. At least one of our sewer plants in my district has to shed load, meaning they have to drop circuits off, because there's not enough power generation capacity to power the entire plant when FPL goes offline. There's not enough redundancy in power generation. And I'll show you what I mean by that. We're incredibly likely, and this is really the, kind of, the summary of it, to have a non-trivial discharge if we don't address infrastructure concerns in the near to, I'm sorry, the immediate to intermediate future. So, this is at Sykes Creek. And this, in and of itself, is not a rusted door that, you know, has got jagged metal, may end up cutting up one of our workers, God forbid. And it needs to be replaced for that reason, but that's not going to cause a leak. What it does show, though, is you're dealing with a plant where there are, there are fixed resources that need to be put to bear, and they're making the best use they can. They don't have the resources to fix everything that needs to be fixed. It's just, it's not something that's been done at this point. So, moving on, there's some equipment there. And it certainly, my point isn't to say that it's not functional. My point is to say, it's, this is not 2019 equipment that we're dealing with. This equipment is oftentimes decades old. And we're going to run into a problem very, very soon. Now, here is kind of the more important part. Maybe that's a pretty yellow for Caterpillar. But this plant has two diesel cat generators. This is basically standing on the opposite side of it. These generators are almost as old as I am. They're within two or three years of my age. And the issue is, if you step back, this first one, I'll just show you with a laser. On this side is where this one is. The first one I showed you, apparently, is now in the state that it's at, able to put out enough current that it does what it's rated to do. The second one that we have, the front, or, I'm sorry, the side view of, on the other hand, it's essentially fixed, in the sense that it's as good as it's going to get, and it's not producing the same current, despite being the same model as the opposite one. Even with shedding loads, that's reliant on both of these generators working. And I had a conversation with a gentleman on Friday, I won't single him out, he's wearing a blue shirt, though, about some concerns I have, relying on a system where you have to have multiple generators working. It's not that you have one in backup for redundancy. You have to have both working in order to have the plant essentially functioning. The concern I've got is, if either fail, you've got a major issue. This particular plant isn't set up to discharge at street level. They have deep injection wells. And if the power goes off, there's a real problem, because that effluent has to go somewhere. And it's something where, I'm telling you, this would be one of those absolutely catastrophic issues, where we're talking a massive, massive spill. I don't want to say "if" these fail, because really, it's "when" these fail, if they're not replaced beforehand. The good thing, though, is with these particular items, I do believe these are on the five-year replacement plan for this particular plant. So, I'm not going to say it's all dread and woe, and everything is as bad as it can be. But this is just representative of a larger problem in terms of infrastructure at the sewage plants. I do want to, before I hand it over to public comment, I do want to share, and I apologize, Dr. Windsor, for sharing your email here. But I got a lot of last-minute questions from folks about, well, you know, which scientists are in support of this plan, and which scientists aren't in support of the plan? Because I think there's been something of a strategy of trying to phrase those folks that I've worked with, like Dr. Burrell and the Green. I think that's a lovely shade of green. Trying to phrase them as a kook, or as someone that doesn't know what he's talking about when he's a published PhD in the field. So, this is someone, again, who I have respect for. I don't agree with Dr. Burrell to 100% all the time. I don't agree with Dr. Windsor 100% all the time. I don't agree with my wife 100% all the time. But they're certainly, I should? I probably should agree with my wife 100% all the time.
Smart man.
Yeah, that's, I agree. That's, I need to work on that. But as far as this goes, it's not that there's an absolute unequivocal consensus that everything that's being proposed by the three folks that are sitting on this side of the table is bad, and it's, you know, it's ill-intentioned, and it's going to ruin the lagoon. All of us want the same thing. I don't really care about any nonexistent political backers. You know, I don't care about reelection. I don't even know that I'm going to run again down the road. I may or may not. I have no idea. I haven't made my mind up. The only thing I'm trying to accomplish is to try to get this lagoon cleaned up. And I think if we work together, there can be a lot more buy-in from the COC than if there's this confrontational us-versus-them polarization. Because I don't want to get into the weeds and pick particular projects that I think are going to be better. Because quite frankly, the COC does have experts that are able to provide a lot of that information, probably better than I would be able to, apart from me spending the time, going and talking to the same folks they talk to. And I'm not trying to get into that. But I think, and, you know, I'll share kind of a little personal story here, just real briefly. I was out in Texas. My brother, his wife, and my two nieces are out there. And I never before knew what a dental emergency was. I found out when I was in Texas. And this was right around Christmas time. I ended up getting in with a dentist. And the dentist basically said, you know, "We've got to do a root canal, and you've got to get a crown on this." And he also said to me, and he had known my sister-in-law for 30-something years, he'd been a dentist. He said, "If you go to an endodontist, he's going to say, 'Don't do the root canal. Don't do the crown. You need, instead, to pull the tooth and get an implant.'" He said, "That isn't necessarily a bad idea." He said, "But you need to understand that the specialist that you go to is going to be very much inclined to recommend whatever their area of specialty is." It's kind of like if you see a physician. It doesn't mean that they're ill-intentioned, or they're poorly motivated, or they've got some corruption issue. They're just going to recommend, if there's any ambiguity, something that they're more comfortable with. If you go to a surgeon, you're probably going to have a greater likelihood of being recommended surgery than if you go to another physician. With the folks that have presented locally here, I think there's been something, and I've had constituents describe it as an echo chamber. I think that's maybe a little bit mean. But you have folks that are disproportionately focused in one type of restoration for the lagoon. And I can tell you, whether you're talking about muck removal, whether you're talking about seagrass, whether you're talking about doing work with oysters and filter feeders, or whether you're talking about infrastructure, if you go to the muck removal folks, yes, they are the experts in muck removal. If you go to the seagrass folks, yes, they're the experts in seagrass. But they're each going to be inclined to recommend something that's geared to a degree to their area of expertise. It's not because they're mean. It's not because they don't want to clean the lagoon up. But it's because that's how they're wired. It's something that's innate in folks that are experts in different fields. So, I just wanted to get that out there, because I think there's been a lot of false assumptions that have been made, maybe some maliciously. I think that, you know, that Palm Bay infrastructure thing, unless there's some explanation for how that came about, I just see that as total fantasy that was invented. I cannot imagine anything that I've ever even, forget, said, said, thought, wrote, intimated. I've never done anything to lead someone to believe that. So, if there's something, I encourage anyone to call me out on what I supposedly said, thought, or did that led someone to believe that. Because I can't come up with anything. But I didn't want anyone to come up here with some false premise that they're arguing against, to look foolish, because they didn't know that we weren't planning on putting roads in Palm Bay with sorrel funds. So, I may have some more comments, but I don't want to take up any more time. I know it's getting late. And there are a lot of comment cards on this. Thank you all.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, ma'am. A couple of thoughts on that, since we're having
A couple of thoughts on that, since we're having our discussion ahead of time. And I do like that we have discussion up here, because we're able to come together with better ideas. Sometimes you guys change me, and hopefully sometimes I change you. Mr. Loeb, I also received harsh emails. And so the thought that I have is, I wish people would kind of watch what we're doing up here, so that you're not arguing with me with something we don't even do in the meeting, or I don't know where they get some of that stuff. Even some people do overviews of what happened, and they don't watch it, and they have a construed opinion of what went on at the meetings also. But all that to say, everybody up here wants the lagoon to do well. I believe that with all of my heart. We just don't always agree on the path. And here's part of my problem, is I try to keep my emotions out of it, but I'm not an expert on this. So I do rely heavily on Ms. Virginia, because her agenda's to fix the lagoon. And then we have the COC, which comes together with information. So I wish there was a way that most of this could be vetted in those, and, you know, we can watch them and pay attention. But I listen to those and try to get the best information I can. And on that, it's not so much that I don't want to necessarily do different things if we need to do them, but there's some things that I'm not there yet, and I feel very strongly on, of trying to make sure we're doing the right thing with this, and make sure that we're staying within the framework of what we promised to do with these tax dollars. When it first came on, and those two guys were peddling, I was like, okay, let's do it for four years. I didn't want to vote for a ten-year tax, because I didn't trust the government. But we're here now, and so it's our duty to watch over it. So for it to be sent back to the board is very appropriate. I mean, we hashed it out, but again, if we have concern, we should go back to the board and get other opinions. And that's where I want to see a lot of this work going on, is at the board level, with the people who do this all the time, and understand all these numbers, and all the phosphorus and nitrogen. And on that, I'm looking for, when I get this information, what is extracting the most amount of nitrogen and phosphorus out of the equation for the lowest amount of funds? So that's what I'm looking for. And back a while ago, and please don't go around saying Commissioner Pritchett doesn't mind if there's leaks in the lagoon. I do mind. But someone had said one time that those leaks were causing a lot less of the nitrogen problem than some of the problems, things that we're doing to get the problems out of the lagoon. And again, I don't know all that, but I'm counting on information when it comes. So again, you know, we're allowed to question it up here. I mean, we should be doing that. But I really am expecting all of the people who have the good information and the knowledge on it to bring it forward here, to give us good information. And on that note too, Mr. Loeb, I think that little fellow should maybe be on the board or be there submitting some ideas, so that they can work all through that together. I think that would help us a lot. So, and on this too, I'm not against fixing infrastructure. I think we have to. So the question is, is where the fund's going to come? And you guys know this isn't a secret. I want to make sure that we don't take any of these funds that the voters voted through for this and move them. But on that note, I'm greatly in favor of raising the fees on the enterprise funds and start moving forward and doing these things. We should be. It's responsible. And I think the communities need to do those things also. So I'm not against fixing it. I just want to figure out how to do the funding. And if the board comes back and say, this part of the funding is appropriate under the plan for the infrastructure, I'm on board, totally. But I don't want to be the one to supersede what you guys come up with. But on that, I want there to be a lot of opinions going into that as it comes forward. And we, again, will have the ability to ask questions on that, because it's our duty to do that as elected officials. But again, as far as, you know, Mr. Loeb, you showed those things. I'd like to kind of move them to the top with some of the sewer and septic problems, to make sure that we're fixing those problems. And I think there should be funding to do that, or we need to sit down and look through the sewer and the water part of our responsibilities. And we might need to make some changes in the priority things going forward. But I am very excited about our new director. He seemed to have some good ideas, and is looking into where we should be going to in the future, and I appreciate that. So that's my comments on that. Other than Mr. Loeb, I really want to commend you for going back and staying on top of this, and doing some research, and figuring out where is a good place moving forward.
Thank you.
Because I think you came up with something good, and actually gives me a lot of comfort. And again, I'm not against changes, but, you know, you brought up some good thinking about us not losing grant funds, which are important. So I think you did a great job with this. You gave a great, great compromise on moving forward with something, so.
Commissioner Loeb?
I just want to add, as far as this agenda item goes, for the folks that haven't read it, and I hope everyone has, this isn't intended to be the final time that we address this. This is to get us past essentially a stalemate or a stagnation. Just as, I don't think anyone in their right mind thought the federal government shutdown was a healthy thing. I don't think anyone in their right mind would think stagnating this is a healthy thing. Even if what I'm proposing is imperfect, it's better than where we're at right now. I don't know that I'm thrilled with it. I don't know that anyone on either side of the argument, or any side of the argument, is going to be thrilled with it, but that's probably what makes it fair. Essentially, there are portions of the plan that no one up here has said boo about. And if there's no reason to hold up those portions of the plan, other than to be vindictive or spiteful or nasty, why would we do that? It doesn't help anyone. So my thought is with this item, and my intention is to get those portions which are non-controversial, which no one has an issue with, pushed through. In terms of picking a particular number, there's as much art as there is science sometimes. As I said, there are certain things that are unknowable, and that's why I say there's as much art as there is science. Because we can't quantify absolutely every variable. So in terms of determining how much of one thing to go one way, or how much of another thing to go another way, there is an art to it. I will say, as to the roughly $100 million, that's a lot of money that we're kind of putting in abeyance, or we're putting on hold for the moment, until we get recommendations back from the COC. I think one nice thing that we should do as a board, if we're able to today, and if we're not, we're not, is to give the COC as much guidance as we can as to what we think would be palatable, if there is something that's more palatable. Because I don't want folks to spin their wheels for nothing, to come back and hear, no, we don't like it, go do something again, but we can't really tell you precisely what it is. I really, you know, and I'm part of it too, I'll admit it. This last meeting, we didn't give you enough direction, insofar as what specifically we were looking for. We said, we want more infrastructure, but how much? And I, you know, again, I'll take fault where faults do. I really feel bad for the folks on the COC, because they weren't given enough direction. And I think, to whatever degree we're able to today, even if it's just board discussion, and it doesn't rise to the level of a vote, if folks want to see the substantial majority go one way, or if they'd be satisfied seeing half of the amount that we're holding go in a particular direction, if we can give some inclination to the COC as to where folks are, I don't see that as being a harmful thing. Even if it's something that ends up being malleable down the road, I just, I want to make sure that we give you as much in the way of tools to work with as we possibly can. Because I think you all have been set out with it, or have been put out with a rather difficult uphill task, not knowing what's going to be acceptable.
Okay. Since there's no more lights, I'll just comment and say, I don't need to talk about the misguided, instead of saying outright untrue emails and that sort of thing. I think Commissioner Loeb hit it, and at the extreme, maybe a little. That's okay. It's a good, it gives you a good idea of what we, I mean, there was worse emails than that, that were quite vulgar. But I want to share, like, when you see things on social media, don't immediately share them if you're not sure. Just call us. I mean, you'll, if you don't get one of us, because we're in a meeting with a constituent, you know, you'll get our staff, and they'll be able to tell you what's up. And if it's something we voted for, supported, they'll say, that is what Commissioner has already supported, or this is what, you know, her thoughts are on it. But don't ever just assume, just because, I mean, it was so ridiculous, that I was really shocked that it was not just getting shared by constituents, and constituents, I thought, that were pretty, you know, in tune with what we were doing in the county, but by organizations. And that, to me, was the crux. That's what bothered me the most, is that you had organizations that knew full well, or at least that pay enough attention to government, to know, to know better, and that actually do know the truth. So, you know, I had a meeting with a few people yesterday, and it was interesting, when I got handed a piece of paper, that this person was given going to the movies. And I'll read it to you. It says, "On 2/26, county commissioners may vote to divert and misappropriate the half-cent Indian River Lagoon Sales Tax Fund to Palm Bay." And then it has my contact information, Commissioner Tobias, and Commissioner Loeb's. So this is part of the problem, you see, because whoever did it didn't have the spine to put their name on it. Because they knew, they knew. They knew they were lying. They knew they just wanted to fire up emotion and incite anger. But you have to know that when people do contact us or email us, they're going to say, what is this? Now, I did get some of those emails where they were, you know, is this true? And of course, I responded to as many emails as I could in between my appointments, because it does take a lot of times. And I think maybe you misunderstood, I got 50 to 70 emails, but phone calls, I can only guess, maybe fifteen to twenty yesterday, maybe, not so many on Friday. But as the rumor kept being perpetuated, that's what we got. And shame on anybody that circulated that rumor, that shared that rumor, that continued to share it once you knew the truth, just to get people here, and telling people, come out with your blue shirts. Well, you know, come out and give us your ideas. Give us your thoughts. But don't spread lies just to push an agenda that didn't even exist to begin with. I mean, if anybody up here talked about misappropriating funds, that would be the headline in Florida today, and Space Coast Daily, and everybody else. Nobody would ever, ever suggest such a thing to misappropriate funds. You may not agree with some of the ideas that we have, however, that's why we have our county attorney here, to make sure that we're well within those boundaries. And I think I said it no less than three or four times the last meeting, is, no one said, suggested to wipe out the plan. So when it's out there that we rejected the plan, that's not true either. We sent the plan back. We said, we'd like to see this added to it. But I said it myself, and I know others had said it up here, no one said we should stop doing anything, or no one said that we should reject the plan. We just wanted to rework it some. So shame on anybody that spread false information, just to get people to get us to rubber stamp a plan that we didn't even have for a week. All the time and effort that the COC puts into that plan, we have a multi-hundred-page plan. I would hope that you don't want us to rubber stamp, but I would hope that you'd want us to question before we spend the millions of dollars that all of us here are paying into that lagoon tax. So that's all I'll say about it. But I figured you'd get a good idea of where the commission, what our thought process was, or before you started yelling at us about fixing Palm Bay roads, that still just, I just shake my head. I think where that could have came from is that Commissioner Tobias and myself, who wanted to see a little bit of change to the plan, both have, as our district is Palm Bay, and that's the only connection I can make. But anyhow, I'm not going to jump to conclusions based on rumors. Anyway, let's go through this list. We've got a whole bunch of cards here. Mr. Phil Stasich, and after Mr. Stasich, we have John Windsor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and fellow commissioners. I'm Phil Stasich, North Merritt Island, speaking on behalf of the Space Coast Progressive Alliance. First of all, what an amazing morning, huh? Really, very exciting to be here, to be able to speak on behalf, in support of the Citizens' Oversight Committee, and their recommendations to you. Very interesting to be here, to watch Mr. Fine, and to realize that, hey, you know what? I actually support what he's doing. I support actually what Mr. Tobias is saying. It's kind of an unusual day, where, you know, we're supporting solar power, we're supporting infrastructure improvements, we're supporting the healing of the Indian River Lagoon, electric cars. My gosh, what a morning. I mean, this is a great day in this county. And really, what I'm here to say is, as you've already said, the Citizens' Oversight Committee works very, very hard. Getting the action program implemented, getting the money to support this, is something that we all feel very strongly about. And I personally believe, I know our organization believes very strongly, that all five of you want to do the right thing. And you are the decision-makers. In the end, it's up to you to make the decision about how that money is spent. It's not the COC's decision. But I'm asking, we are asking you, we're begging you, please, give proper priority to the recommendations from the COC, before you make your decisions, before you decide what action to take. Muck removal is a real deal, and we know that it is a sizable percentage of the, frankly, the poisoning of our lagoon. We also know the sewage outflow. Frankly, I've been here for years, talking to you about this topic. Those of you that have been on the board know that, know that I'm passionate about it. I personally have spent at least the past quarter century diving in the lagoon, cleaning the lagoon, working on oysters. This is something very, very personal to me, and that's one of the reasons, many of us here have the same shared experiences. And that's why we're here, to encourage you. Stay on track. Please do not get distracted. Please do not allow the program to be slowed by perhaps infighting. But I understand that you have to make rational decisions. And as I said before, ultimately, it's you that are the decision-makers. We recognize that. We're counting on you to do the right thing. We ask you to give appropriate priority to the recommendations from the Citizens' Oversight Committee. They are our voice to you. So, to finish this, I want to say thank you for listening to me. Thank you for listening to all of us. I am so, so sorry that you have to face this abuse, that people call you and attack you and say bad things on social media. It's something that bothers me deeply. So we thank you for your service. But please, as always, fight for the lagoon. Don't let back. Do the right thing. Do you have any questions for me?
I do.
Yes.
Are, do you manage the Space Coast Progressive Alliance page, and are you representing them today?
I do not. But I know that on the Facebook page, that was up on there as well. Facebook makes me crazy, because anybody can post anything.
It was posted by the Space Coast Progressive Alliance, talking about the potential of us misappropriating funds.
Yeah, I'm going to have to take a look at that and find out what's going on.
I'm just saying, and I think it was a message, I don't know if he's a chair, or a message from Alec Buckness, or whatever, but it was...
Sure didn't come from me, I'll tell you that.
But it was, but that's part of it, because I'm sure you have a large following with your base and stuff like that. But that's the kind of thing of, I would just say, just caution you to be, because you're always so pleasant, and you always ask us if we have questions and that sort of thing. And, you know, we all have thick skin. A good friend told me once, you know, if someone rips it off, it just grows back thicker.
Yeah, if it's on our Facebook page, you know, we're responsible.
I don't mind people getting upset with what we do, or yelling at us for what we do. What I don't like is just the feeding of the rumor, when it's something that's not true. That's what's frustrating to me.
Well, we'll look into it. Again, I believe Facebook is, you know, makes me crazy.
Someone sent it to me, because I obviously don't belong to that page, but...
Yeah. It's an important part of everybody's outreach these days, is social media. So, in any case, my apologies for that.
Oh, don't apologize, please. I just wanted to point it out to you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Loeb?
Just real quick, I want to make a comment as well, because I don't know that that was one of the pages I responded to, but I think a lot of folks have been somewhere between surprised and shocked that I've responded somewhat forcefully to some of these rumors.
Sure.
And the one thing I'll point out, and I'll just say it publicly, just because I'm an elected official, and it applies to everyone else up here, doesn't mean I ever gave up my First Amendment rights. So if someone's going to dish it, they better be able to take it. And I don't mean that toward you at all, I really don't, because you've been nothing but respectful. But there have been a lot of folks, I think, that presume that there has to be this artificial level of restraint in replying to these things. And quite frankly, I've never intended to be a politician. I consider myself something between an elected official and a public servant. This is not my long-term career plan. When I'm done with this, I'm going to go back to doing what I was doing before. So quite frankly, you know, maybe my wife would disagree with me responding to as much as I respond to, but I respond to a lot. And I think it takes people off guard, when they're on these individual little sub-threads on Facebook, that I'll reply rather, you know, rather strongly. And I intend to continue doing that. And if someone wants to say, oh, I got you, no, you really didn't get me, that's kind of how I operate.
Well, Mr. Loeb, it's very important to understand that I'm not here today because of that message or that thread, or what happened on Facebook.
Understood.
I'm here today because of what happened at the last board meeting, and the actions that you took. And I did do the research, and I have watched, and listened. And you know we're very much a part of this process, and we feel very strongly about this. We're hoping that you won't be distracted. We're hoping that you can stay focused. I've physically been in the muck at the bottom of the river, year after year. This gelatinous ooze that flows around is not an illusion, and it's really out there, and it migrates around on the bottom of the Indian River Lagoon, and it is, it's the real deal, so.
I'll tell you, just on that front, real quick, I'm cavern certified to dive. I've been diving forever and ever, my wife even longer. There are some caves that I've been in, that quite frankly, had better visibility, even with the silt stirred up than in the lagoon. And I say that, having been in the lagoon as well.
Me too, I know what you mean.
So I understand where you're coming from. I think there's certainly areas that have a profound amount of muck, and I don't mean profound in a good way by any means. But, you know, one request I would make, and again, I'm not trying to force anyone's hand, I'm just trying to make suggestions that hopefully will allow everyone to have a more productive level of discourse. I don't care if someone's a Democrat, or they're a Republican, when I know something is factually incorrect, I would just say, maybe encourage your members, if they know something is incorrect, to speak up, whether or not the person's a Democrat, or Republican, or NPA, or whatever the case may be. Because all it does is it wastes staff's time, and it gets constituents riled up over a non-issue. And if people are upset at what we're doing, God bless them, they have every right to be upset. Come up here and tell me why you think I'm wrong. But the manner in which this thing kind of, I guess, went viral, it's funny actually, Ms. Bentley saw the video that I intended to include in the slideshow, and I really, I miss it, so I'll just kind of briefly describe it. There was an insurance, I won't say the company, an insurance company, that had something with two individuals standing in front of an apartment or a condo, where they were talking about, well, I read this on the internet, so therefore it must be true. And then the young lady of the two, she says, well, oh, that's my boyfriend, he's a French model, and apparently read that on the internet.
Oh, I remember that one.
This guy that was kind of less than totally attractive came by, and he says, bonjour.
I saw that commercial.
I was going to put it in there, but...
Remember that commercial?
Well, I'll tell you what, if I might ask, please, don't focus too much attention on what happened in the social media thing. That message is, should be, in my view, kind of set aside. The primary focus of hopefully what will happen today, after me, the speakers will be talking about the primary issue of allocating funds and supporting the recommendations of the Citizens' Oversight Committee. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I saw you get up, that's why I knew you were coming. MJ Waters is next.
Didn't want to cheat. John Windsor, Melbourne, Florida. I'm a Citizens' Oversight Committee member, but I'm speaking here for myself today. I will remind everybody that Citizens' Oversight Committee, we don't get together and drink beer and talk about issues. We're all governed by the same kind of sunshine rules you guys are. It's terribly inhibiting, but we have to have all of our discussions out and open here. It's televised, and anybody's invited to come. And I hope you recognize who COC members are, and who's claiming to be speaking for the COC, okay? Because none of the COC members that I know have come up here and say they're speaking for the COC. Commissioner Loeb, thank you for bringing this item forward. I was very concerned at the last meeting about a logjam being created. I think we have a way forward now. I hope everybody else can see that, too. Sending the $100 million back to the COC for reevaluation, reallocation, reconsideration, I think is the way to go. At this point, I think this is the only reasonable option to keep moving forward. I want to thank you, commissioners all, for working so hard on this, and your continuing work on all the lagoon issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And after MJ, we have Vince Lamb.
Good afternoon now. I think our discourse would be a lot nicer if maybe you fed us around noon every day.
I'm telling you, pizza.
And you too? Yeah, let's bring pizza in for everybody.
Yes.
So MJ Waters, I live in Melbourne, Florida. I've lived here for over 30 years. And I want to thank you for taking your stewardship of the lagoon so seriously. That means a lot. And every one of these meetings I'm delighted to attend, I see that come through, and that's really important. And we also depend on you to be good stewards of our dollars. And so when I see you talking about how we spend money on whatever it is, that's a good thing, because I think that's something really important in your job description, and ways that benefit us in the short term as well as the long term. I think that's, you know, it's a lot of pressure just to do things right now, but the lagoon problem is going to continue to be with us for quite a while, and as we see our population growing more and more, we've got to start thinking about what the future impact is going to be of that on us. We do have a detailed, science-based program, and, you know, I heard you talking about multiple things, and we like to say, it's a yes-and problem. It's muck, yes, and it's septic, and it's sewage, and it's fertilizer, and it's dog poop, and many, many things. And that's why I think it's so important to not just focus on one magic bullet, which, you know, it's easy when I'm sitting at home, and I don't know anything about the lagoon, to say, oh, well, that sounds like a good idea. So that's why I'm so glad we have so many people with expertise in these different areas to help us. The fact that the plan is being updated doesn't mean there was anything wrong with it. This is built into the process and it shows the wisdom of being open to what we've seen happen, to innovation, to new data and new research. And that makes me feel good that it's being looked at by scientists, by the COC and by you to say, "Okay, what are we learning here? How can we make it even better in the future?" Making changes to the plan is clearly in your purview. And changes based on science, new data and technologies and experience should be seriously considered. I'm a big fan of facts and logic and data in making these decisions. And, you know, I think one of the issues that I've heard you talk about is trust between citizens and government and government and citizens. And I think it's essential that we all continue to try to build on that trust. Because there's lots of fractures here and there and getting the right information and then asking those questions is really important. My preference is that you would adopt the 2019 plan as it was presented. But this motion allows work to continue, as well as take advantage of some of the matching funds that are out there. And I think projects that would have to be stopped as a result of this should be rethought and put back into that. I think that's really important, because the plan needs to move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. After Vince, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Waters?
Just a couple of comments, if you want to chime in as well.
Sorry, Vince.
Feel free. But. I'm sorry. A couple of things. First off, I agree, there is no single silver bullet. I think absolutely everyone agrees on that. If you look at the pie chart breakdown, even if 100% hypothetically, and I don't know that it's going to be this way, it probably won't be, quite frankly, 100% of the $100 million that's set aside, even if all of that goes to infrastructure, we're still spending more money on demucking. So I agree with you 100%. There is no single silver bullet. One thing I do want to caution folks on, though, and it's come up time and again, and I've had this conversation with a couple of folks wearing blue at least, the COC does absolutely consider scientific input from folks with PhDs, experts.
Absolutely. I go to all the meetings.
Say again?
I go to all their meetings.
Perfect.
So, I know.
But my point that I want to convey is, you don't have to go to the COC in order to hear from the experts. I've heard from so many people, yesterday I met with one of the regional folks for St. John's River Water Management District, I met with another PhD, separate from that, that's an expert that's published in this field. It's great if you want to go to the COC to get your input, but it's not that the COC is the one and only conduit on the earth through which someone has to go through in order to get knowledge on this particular field. And I'm not saying that you've said that, you haven't, I'm not going to make the, you know, I'm not going to be disingenuous and try to use a logical fallacy by putting words in your mouth. But I think it's important for folks to realize that those of us sitting up here, I think with no exceptions, in all likelihood, and I can speak for myself and I imagine the same is true for everyone else, none of us sat down in our pajamas at home and thought, "Well, this would be cool if we did it this way." I can tell you, I have put in an ordinate amount of time, both meeting with folks in my office, meeting with folks in county and out of county, on this particular issue. It is one of, if not the highest priority in the office for me. I can't tell you even this week how many hours I put in on it. My wife was upset on Sunday when I was working on it. And it's not the first and it won't be the last time. But I think there's just kind of a disconnect between folks' assumptions that if we're not hearing from particular scientists at the COC, that we're just not hearing from them at all. And I can tell you, certainly in my case, that's flatly incorrect. And I would imagine in many, if not all of my colleagues' cases, that's probably incorrect as well.
I understand that. I think that's a good point. And one of the things that I have enjoyed in going to the COC is they do have a lot of different scientists with different perspectives. And so maybe if you know of others, we need to have them come into the COC and share that in a more public forum, so we can all learn about that.
I appreciate that. I'll be happy, I don't want to hijack the time here.
Yeah, so, I'll sit down.
Yeah, but I will tell you, I do know of at least one scientist who had concerns about how approachable the COC was. So I'm happy to chat with you about that if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
After Vince, we have Mitchell Roffer.
Good afternoon. Vince Lamb, South Merritt Island, lived there, lived on the lagoon for 45 years. The original Save Our Lagoon Plan was developed with the understanding that sewage utilities had adequate sources of funding to handle the movement and processing of sewage without dumping or leaking into the end of the lagoon. So at that time, that was what we believed. The developers of the plan clearly understood that the funds provided by a half-cent sales tax for 10 years was not going to be adequate to fund everything that was needed for the lagoon. So clearly, we need a priority structure. They determined that projects should be assigned priorities based on the amount of nutrient pollutants removed for each dollar invested. The Citizens Oversight Committee was included to recommend specific projects based upon the best use of the funds available. This process appeared to work really well in 2017 and 2018, the first two years. On February 12th, just a few weeks ago, this board refused to approve the projects recommended by the COC with the general statements that the funds should be moved from muck removal to sewage and septic projects. And of course, with no specific direction of what you were willing to accept. The agenda item that Commissioner Loebert has proposed provides a means to move forward with the 2019 project plan while expressing an intent to shift some funds, some future funds away from muck dredging. The agenda item also includes a support for projects which the state legislature has been asked to provide matching funds. So voting for this agenda item will allow the lagoon restoration to continue while the future plans are discussed and considered. I would encourage you to please use the Citizens Oversight Committee, maybe this is a source of some of the public trust on how this program is working. So, you know, I think it's very important that you provide adequate direction to them to investigate and make recommendations as we go forward. So thank you for your diligence on this.
Thank you. After Mitchell, we're going to have Bo Platt.
Hi, I'm Mitch Roffer, 6025 Highway A1A in Melbourne Beach. I'd like to thank Mr. Tobia for responding to my emails rather quickly last night. I was, I've been out of the country and haven't been able to follow everything and I apparently was duped about this misappropriation of the, actually, the supposed misappropriation of funds going from the plan. So I wrote a letter to all of you last night. I don't know if you got to see it or not, but I agree with what I had to say. I thank Mr. Loebert in particular, new face on the board, for his passion about the environment. And I have to second the comments that came from the people in front of me. This is a great day to hear all the passion for saving the lagoon and for infrastructure. This idea of the dupeness that came on social media shows the lack of trust of government, the lack of trust to how people have dealt with funds in the past. I worked door-to-door on promoting the sales tax. The comments at the time were, "Be careful that the commission doesn't take the money and take it someplace else for their pet projects." So that vein goes continually through the public. And you have to continually be wary of that and act in favor of that. So please be aware. And also, with regard to trust, you have a panel of experts that work for the county and you have a citizens' sub-board. So please, support and trust your scientific experts. They have been studying this, as you have said, many years longer than you. I would suggest that you adopt and approve the plan as it goes in now. If you have additional fact-finding you need to do, please take the time, inform the committees and do the fact-finding. That being said, we need to spend big money on infrastructure. It can't be done on little money, taking from re-appropriating some money from muck and putting it to sewage. We need to spend it through user funds and big bonds. We're talking maybe a billion dollars. So please have the political courage and act. People do want to spend the money. We do not mind paying for infrastructure changes, user funds, if in fact it will go to that and not other taken away. So please, after this issue is on, take up the issue of infrastructure and spending big money and you can spend it, you can pay for it with a bond, and I think the public will support it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Question?
Do you have questions? Just keep it, so we're not here forever.
Okay, real quick question. In terms of where you heard that before, I mean, I'm happy that you acknowledged that that was something that drove you to come here. Was that from someone you knew? I'm not asking you to identify the source, I'm just curious.
I don't remember where I saw it. Just, I have, I don't know, hundreds of emails that I have, because I came back from the country without much internet. So I don't know where it came from. I saw a couple of them and immediately said, "Oh, boy, here we go, just what people said, this is going to happen." So I immediately composed a letter before sending it. I sent it to a couple of friends, I got some edits and comments about it, and then sent it out last night. But just the idea that, and it shows you the lack of trust that the public has for you people up there, that they immediately think that you're going to take this money and spend it for pet projects. You know, $400 million sounds like a lot, but when you consider what's really needed in this county for infrastructure changes and water and treatment, just alone what needs to be done, it's a lot more money needs to be taken. And I think the public now has been educated on the lagoon issues and the sewage and septic. No one wants to see sewage go into the lagoon. But when you compare the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus coming into the lagoon compared to these sewage dumps, which is not itself equivalent, because now we're putting in health issues. When we put sewage into the lagoon, we're changing the health system of it, which has nothing to do with pounds of nitrogen. It makes it unacceptable for human safety. So yes, money needs to be sent for infrastructure.
Just real quickly, may I?
Sure. Make it quick.
And I'm just, I'm curious, because I don't know the answer to this. In terms of someone that obviously lives here and cares about the lagoon, what is your impression of the relationship between the B.O.C.C. and the COC insofar as, what do you think is appropriate for the B.O.C.C. to do when they get a recommendation from the COC that they don't agree with? Because my understanding is, we can approve it, we can approve it with modifications or we can reject it. But a lot of folks that have been giving the most pushback have been upset that we've done anything other than just simply approving it without even questioning it. I just don't know what the expectations are.
I think the appropriate thing is to ask questions, because the ultimate, you are the representatives of us as citizens, but we'd like you to review it with knowledge and education. If you don't have the knowledge and a report, as intensive as it was, was turned over and you don't have enough information, please ask for a special briefing and become educated on the subject before you say, "Oh, well, we need to do this, we need to do that." You, when you comment back to the COC, you're putting pressure on them that, "Oh, they don't like this, we must change." I would like to see them have some backbone and turn back to you and say, "No, we agree with what we said the first time and we don't want to change it."
But not even the scientists on the COC board always agree. So what I'm saying to you is.
That's why we discuss it.
And we have a lot of citizens on that board that don't have the scientific background. So we can argue about who's the expert. We take their recommendations and we look at them, but if you expect this board to rubber-stamp something, then we're not doing our job either.
No, I agree.
But I don't believe anybody up here would make a decision just to make it without any sort of scientific input from either experts or our own data. I mean, I just.
You're very busy people and you have a lot of things in the county to deal with. There are people who are focused strictly on this issue.
Yeah, I just, I don't want you to get the mistaken impression that if we don't agree it's because we have a lack of knowledge, because that's something I think it is somewhat prevalent unfortunately, and it's just simply factually incorrect. I don't claim to have the level of expertise that folks with PhDs in relevant fields have, but I've certainly spoken with a lot of them. I guarantee you, more than a lot of folks wearing blue shirts out there. You know, I've got my blue shirt on as well. And I've done my due diligence and I would not presume to question a plan without having done that level of due diligence, to have that concern that there really may be a better way forward. But I appreciate you coming up.
And I'll be spending more time with you individually and other members, too.
Feel free. Thank you.
Okay, Bo Platt. And after Bo Platt, Kristi Blanchard.
Bo Platt from the city of Melbourne. And I'm going to say a little bit about muck. It's a major source of nutrient pollution and light attenuation in the lagoon, according to scientists that are experts in the area like Austin Fox, John Trefry, RP Trocine, D.W. Woodall. The annual release of nutrients from decaying mucks almost as much as the annual external loading delivered by stormwater and groundwater outflow combined. Muck contributes 4,600 tons of nitrogen and 44 tons of phosphorus to the lagoon each year. Muck is toxic. I've got a jar of it here. Nothing grows in it. It kills fish, seagrass, shellfish, other life considered beneficial to the lagoon. And you can see, when it's stirred up, it spreads all over. It fills the water around it. If I had three hours instead of three minutes, it would start to settle out and you'd be able to see a little bit of clarity again. So the 2019 Save Our Indian River Lagoon Plan is based on the expertise of scientists, people with years and years of expertise on the cause of the lagoon's current problems. The plan targets 4 million cubic yards of muck for removal, enough to fill a football field half a mile high. It's controversial, because it's not only a major source of pollutants, it's a product of other problems, stormwater, septic, other pollution sources that create future muck. So we must address both the muck and the factors that create muck. And the plan, as presented, does that. In 2016, my wife and I spent weeks canvassing for the passage of the lagoon tax. Now, at the time, Floridians were on the heels of Amendment 1, and the majority of the people we spoke with were skeptical that if the referendum passed, lagoon funds would be redirected by local politicians for other purposes, which in their mind is what happened with Amendment 1. So we assured them that the citizens' oversight component of the plan would prevent this from happening. So I'm asking you to approve the plan today, as it further delay jeopardizes the ability of Brevard County and communities to attract matching funds. So I respectfully request that you approve the 2019 project plan as initially submitted by the Brevard County Natural Resources Department that includes the key component of guidance from the Citizens Oversight Committee. And I implore you to consider the will of the residents that overwhelmingly passed the lagoon, the referendum, in every single precinct in Brevard and move the existing plan forward. Thank you.
Kristi Blanchard. And after Kristi, we have Courtney Barker.
Hi, I'm Kristi Blanchard. I'm a resident of Merritt Island, so for under Commissioner Loebert. So thank you for letting me speak for a moment. I'm new to this. I am recently retired from High Tech as program manager. Always been passionate about the environment. I'm a veteran who moved here from Washington State to be near my folks. I now have 14-year-old twins. We live on the canal in Merritt Island. My kids go to Edgewood. I'm here as a homeowner. I'm here as a person who has spent my whole life saving my money so that we could live on the water. We've kind of reached our dream there. 11 years ago, when we moved to Merritt Island, we could see in the water. We could see the manatees out there making love. We could see the dolphins. We could see the mullet jumping in the water. That's no longer true, as you know, from the brown algae. I recently got my kids involved in growing mangroves. So we're growing six mangroves in our home to try to restore mangroves. We are using oysters. We're trying to grow oysters, which is a challenge with the silt that sits on top of those oysters that we have to remove every week to try to get them to grow back. So I'm here to say that I also watch the Citizens Oversight Committee, probably one of a few hundred people who watched it online. But it inspired me to come here today to say that the muck is a real problem, that when you worry about your children getting into the water, you don't want to put your feet in the muck, because it's so horrible. And all you want to do is have your kids go out on the boat and go fishing and be happy that what they bring back you can eat. And so I would say that the muck is an issue. I understand, I don't want to have, I was always concerned about the sewage that goes into the river as well. But after watching the Citizens Oversight Committee and the scientific information that shows that it's roughly equivalent in degradating the water, the sewage and the muck, and that they have scientific evidence, and even Dr., I had to write his name down, Trefry, even mentioned that even 20 or 30 years ago, he would have disagreed on removing muck, but even now, he thinks that's important. And they have locations where we could remove it, could make a bigger impact. I would like to express my concern as a homeowner and someone that would welcome you removing the muck, if you would like to, to try it from our canals and, you know, bring our water back. And I'm happy to be part of that and I'm sure I can, you know, get some of my neighbors to also join in testing the water and giving you that data back, so that you could be transparent to the rest of the community with these efforts, because this has been super educational to me. I'm glad to see so much passion, because we do worry that our government does forget about us as citizens and why we moved here. So thank you.
Now, I just want to point out on something you said. And again, I don't know how many folks have gone through line-by-line the agenda item, but what I propose today is to send $125 million toward muck removal. So it is the single largest component, as best I can tell. If not, it's pretty darn close, out of everything there. The amount that we're putting to the side, the $100 million, we're determining what to do with, based in large part on what the COC comes back and recommends. So I don't think there's a question as to prioritizing muck removal. I've never said, "Let's stop demucking altogether." I think the question is where that balance is. And in my mind, based upon the conversations I've had with different governmental agencies and with scientists, many of whom, well, at least a couple of whom I see sitting here, the question is, do we want to have our constituents cheering and saying yay because we temporarily fix the lagoon and make it somewhat better quickly? Or do we really want to have the long-term benefits where if someone owns property and they intend to reside here for a long period of time, in the long run, we'll be better off? And I'll go back to my, just real quickly, my fish tank analogy, where if you don't have a filtration system on there, you can clean it out by siphoning all the gunk off the bottom and it'll look great, but then it's going to come back very, very quickly. And it's going to be something we have to deal with. But if you look at the loading in the first place, on the front end, I'm concerned about muck coming back in the future, because we're allowing more sources of nitrogen and phosphorus to infiltrate the lagoon. So I agree with you. I think the question is where that balance is, though.
Yes, sir. So as a program manager in IT, we have an agile method. And part of that agile method is to experiment and to test things and bring in the different opinions from the whole team, and then move forward on some of those suggestions and see how far we get. And some things fail immediately and we stop. Some things show promise and we continue on until either they prove out or they don't. But one thing we could do here is something called course correction, right? As you try out these different things, and, you know, I don't have the background of all these scientists and such, I'm just a homeowner who happened to see a video. But, you know, course correction allows you to make these decisions and to move forward, but you can't move forward without data. And I think that the data that's important to gather is as much the transparency that you're trying to get and the communication to the community. And it has to come from many channels, it can't just be a video. My neighborhood is still filled with older people, some of whom are dying off now, but who are original owners in Villa de Palmas. And they don't look at social media. You know, you have to walk door to door to talk to them. You know, we have a lot of young people coming in, trying to rebuild the homes and rebuild the neighborhoods. And all of this is good for tax base and all those other things.
Okay, I don't want to cut you off.
Okay.
But I was going to cut him off.
Okay, thank you.
But he's cut himself off.
But course correction is good. So thank you for doing that.
It's three minute public comment. We still have, there's at least a dozen or more cards here, and I want to be respectful of the people that have been patiently waiting. Ms. Barker, and after Courtney, Mike Malavy. I hope I said that right.
Phew. It's been a while since I've gotten the chance to spend all day with you guys. But thank you all for your time. I can't imagine you're going to be here for longer than I am, so I'm sorry about that. But I can definitely...
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Courtney Barker, City Manager for the city of Satellite Beach and also voting member of the Citizens Oversight Committee. I just wanted to, you know, say, I hear you on the comments on Facebook, you know, when we went through the sewer discharges, there's no city in Brevard County, other than Indian Harbor Beach, that understands how hard it is to go through something like that on social media and otherwise, because I remember getting all the complaints rolling in, and I'd say, "But, you know, it's not my utility. It's, you know, Brevard County." And they'd say, "Oh, but you're just passing the buck." And you're like, "But it's not my utility."
Or you're lying in your pocket saying, "He crocked."
Right, exactly, yeah. So we completely understand, and it's a hard thing to go through. But I think one of the things that I just wanted to impress on you today is, thank you very much for bringing this forward again and trying to come to an agreement. That's important, that we keep being able to move along, and you being willing to do that is, I'm very appreciative of that, and just wanted to say thank you. I did want to just express some concerns. When we, in the COC, we had, through the sewer discharges, we had the utilities come in and speak with us. And we said, you know, "What can we do? What can we do to help you?" And, you know, part of the problem with the fund is that, not problem, but an aspect of it, is that we adopted an ordinance, and the ordinance says, "Upon county commission approval, a project or projects that deliver comparable nutrient removal benefits may be added to listed Save Our Lagoon projects or substituted for the funding allocated to one or more other Save Our Lagoon projects in the same sub-lagoon. Unless otherwise agreed to by the county commission, if a substituted project costs more than the project listed in the Save Our Lagoon Plan, the requesting partner must provide the balance of the cost." And that ordinance was ratified and basically included in every interlocal agreement with every city in Brevard County. So unless we get everybody to agree to that, to change that, we aren't spending lagoon money on maintenance, because that's not a comparable nutrient removal project. So what we did was, we said, "Okay, what is the above and beyond?" And we had one utility submit a project to us, and that was Cocoa Beach, and that was above and beyond nutrient removal, that went beyond their maintenance activities. And we did recommend that funding to be funded. So the idea that we're not approving utility projects is just not true. We just haven't gotten any. We did also shift a lot of projects from muck dredging to septic. So that is happening. The problem is, is we are like not a speedboat. We can't just jerk one direction real fast. We're kind of like that big barge that has to go really slow, you know? So when we call for projects in September, we start reviewing the projects in November, and then it's sent to you. So for us to change that, we need that advance notice so we can start shopping it to the utilities and saying, "Hey, man, this is what the commission wants. We need to get your utility projects in and have those workshops. You know, what are we looking for?" So that's just what we would request from you, is like, you know, just some more time, because I don't think we're going to be able to make $100 million projects come up in this year for septic and sewer. We might be able to get some septic ones going, you know, but I'm hoping that we could. I mean, we're, you know, we're going to give it our best shot. But I think if we had next year, we'd be even more successful in that regard, because we'd have the time to shop it with the utilities and make sure that we go through workshops and give them the forms and make sure they understand what we're looking for and get those projects on in as a project to us, so we have something to vote on. You know what I mean? So that's my only concern, and I'm hoping that, you know, the plan passes and we can get some work done.
I got to catch you off.
And appreciate you. Okay, sorry.
And just real quickly, I do want to say, as far as $100 million in one year, I don't think anyone contemplated that. We're talking over the planned life, so it really would probably be closer to a tenth that amount than $100 million a year. No one reasonably, I think, anticipates, or even unreasonably anticipates, that the COC is going to be able to line up $100 million in septic or sewer projects in one year. And I promise you, if you have any difficulty getting in touch with Eddie Fonten, let me know. I can get with him and get him to get projects to you if there's any question as to where the needs are. I can assure you, I can get that thing fast-tracked.
Great, great. Yeah, we're definitely on your side, and we appreciate your advice.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bentley. You know, we've gone over the ordinance and the different interlocals and stuff. Is there anything prohibiting us from doing infrastructure or sewer-related projects? As long as it benefits the, is there not in conflict with the other, with the agreements, right?
Well, it is all tied to the ordinance itself and the adoption of the original plan.
Right.
Because it had, it is an infrastructure tax, but it is also tied to the original plan, and now you're amending the plan, and so you do have these nutrient removal questions that arise. But no, you can't just take the money and start spending it on infrastructure without considering the plan. But it is legal to spend it on infrastructure.
Right.
Within the confines of the plan.
Right, yes.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. But I don't know how you measure nutrient, maybe Virginia can answer this, how you measure the potential impacts, and this has been brought up a few times, and I don't know how you measure potential nutrient impacts based on unforeseen events and untested infrastructure. I don't know how you, we don't know how many millions of gallons of raw, semi-treated, or whatever sewage or otherwise, or even stormwater at this point, depending on what events happen, what the contributing, it's impossible to measure. Right, so... It could be triple what amount we think it is. Right. We don't have a crystal ball for knowing the future. So what we did was, we looked at the past, and so we didn't just look at, you know, one year of discharges. We pulled the state records for the last 13 years and looked at discharges over that period of time. But we know our infrastructure is older than it was 13 years ago, so that matters too. Yes. Okay. Anyway, I don't want to turn into Commissioner Loeb here and start asking too many... I'm just kidding. He knows I'm teasing him. He's got a great sense of humor. Okay, Mike Malavy, and then Jim Glass.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Commissioners, minus one. I'm Mike Malavy, Merritt Island, and I'm coming to address you today in regards to the Citizens Oversight Committee and their recommendations on the lagoon. And in order to save time, I'm going to read my notes so I don't continue to blather on. I ask you to implement the plan as recommended. In light of what was just discussed, I wanted to repeat what was said earlier about the offgassing of the silt, the muck. It far outweighs what you project may occur, and so I ask you to consider that when you're going over your potential vote. As Dr. DeFries noted earlier today, it's not a matter of this or that, it is this and that. And I want to remind everyone that the demucking is part of a plan, a collaborative plan of several action items, and so I ask you not to disconnect from that, but to include demucking. Muck removal in the lagoon is critical, and I think that the committee's recommendations stipulate that. The funds have been allowed, allotted, to restore a key asset in our community, the lagoon, and it should be used for the designated reasons. As Representative Fine noted earlier this morning, sweeping funds from intended use are detrimental to a project's success. Representative Fine's bill discussed this morning also addresses improving infrastructure, which seems to be such a key issue to each of you, and that's a good thing. But I think that we should remember that he is going to try to solve this funding of the infrastructure problem and that we need to keep our mindset on keeping forward with the recommendations from the committee, and that includes demucking. Our ancestors lived near, worked on, and played in the lagoon. Current and new residents want to do the same. And visitors arrive year-round to do that as well. You have the ability today to ensure a successful restoration process continues. Let history portray you as a person who took positive action for the benefit of Brevard residents today and in the future. Please implement the Indian River Lagoon Project Plan as recommended by the Citizens Oversight Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. After Jim Glass, then after Jim, we have Danny Straub.
Good afternoon. I'll be very brief. I'm Jim Glass. Live in Melbourne, Florida. I'm a member of the Florida Fly Fishing Association. I'm a retired civil engineer. I know muck is bad stuff. I had a course in soil mechanics in 1960 when I was in college. I know what goes into makeup muck. I was an inspector for DOT, a co-op student in South Florida. In muck, you can't build bridges or build paved roads over the top of muck. It's dangerous, it's bad. Also, I worked for 25 years in the Tampa Bay area as a civil engineer with Hillsborough, Pinellas County, city of Tampa, Clearwater, Tarpon Springs on sewage projects. I'm very familiar with the sewage infrastructure. What got my dander up is when I saw this lagoon plan was devoting more than half the money towards muck. I talked to one of my colleagues, who is now still practicing wastewater engineering, and is familiar with the, here in Brevard County, and he told me, after reviewing this plan, that the cost to fix the infrastructure in our area, we all know that's bad, is going to cost four times what's in that plan. So that's what really got my attention. I said, "We've got to do something to fix the infrastructure. Muck is bad, too. And it's unfortunate that you all are put in the position of trying to weigh the balance of the two. I don't envy you that decision, but I think you've got a good start. I think you're on track to take some money away from the muck removal and put it into infrastructure." Let me give you some examples. One of the ladies, we had a discussion of this at one of our meetings, and this lady came up with this, the wife of one of our members. She said she didn't vote to dredge muck in rich people's canals. Let them pay. They put their fertilizer in yard clippings, which caused the muck to farm. She said her HOA has to pay for the maintenance of stormwater pan, stormwater retention ponds and swales, and pay for removing invasive plants and wetlands and preserves in their subdivision. Doesn't the same principle apply to people that live on these canals? There's $78 million designated in this plan for removing muck in canals. The projects that were added to the plan this year, $9 million, $6 million of that money is going to dredge muck in canals. So I just ask you to go ahead, approve the plan the way you have. I think you're on the right track, and thank you very much.
Does anybody need a break? I'm asking. Are you okay? Mr. Commissioner Smith, do you need a break?
Are you working me up?
No, I said, "Do you need a break?"
I'm good. No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Ms. Danny Straub, and then after Danny, we have Lou Connick. Connile.
Hello, my name is Danny Straub, and I work for the city of Melbourne Engineering Department, and I'm here just to thank you guys for moving the plan forward. We have several projects in the budget for the next couple of years that are in the project plan, and we're really excited to see if those projects continue to be moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Beautiful. Mr. Lou Connick.
See, it's just the way you form your case. Every time it gets me. I apologize.
Okay. I'll try to reform that.
Just so I don't mess it up for you.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity. My name again is Lou Connick, and I live here in Melbourne, and I'm speaking today for myself. And I want to encourage you to take, I'll come back to this a couple of times, a kind of comprehensive sources and solutions type of perspective. I think it's something that's maybe missing, and I'll bring this up for you. I moved here in mid-2016, and I was really impressed with the willingness of the community to tax itself to restore the lagoon. I hold an MS degree in environmental engineering and a law degree, and I've practiced in both areas. And I was also, from that point of view, very impressed with the system that the plan, the referendum, set up using the Citizens Oversight Committee. I've spent hours and hours at the Oversight Committee meetings, but those hours pale in comparison to the time spent by the COC members and the members of the staff here with the county. One thing that I want to do in terms of this comprehensiveness point is, I'm hearing about scientists talking here and scientists talking there, and I believe those scientists are important, but I also believe that funneling that through a uniform process, or at least touching on that uniform process of review within the COC is really important. We don't want three or four different bodies of science developing. We want to build towards coherence, towards understanding. So I encourage those people to come through the COC. I endorse the steps that you're going to take today, I believe, in moving ahead so that we don't pause and wait, because that would be terrible. I recommend that you go beyond the Save Our Lagoon, the Soral project. When you do your examinations, don't just look at the COC output, but look at the, you know, look at what's being done, both in terms of sources and solutions, from, for example, the St. John's River budget. Agricultural sources, I don't believe, are included as part of what is going on within Soral. The utilities, we're not including, obviously, all of the utility repairs and step-ups there because it's not part of the upgrade. And so there are sources and solutions that I believe that you should be legitimately paying attention to as you're looking at the Soral plan. And that's, so, take a broader view. Also, we need more money. We need more money. And so, yeah, support our legislators to get that money. We can't get done what we want with what we've got.
Dr. Lisa Soto, and then William Delucia.
My name is Lisa Soto. I'm the Executive Director of the Marine Resources Council, and I'm here to ask you to please pass the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan, the 2019 version. I do appreciate your willingness to try to meet in the middle and at least get some of the projects underway. Commissioner Loeb, in particular, for bringing this agenda item up today, and everybody for considering it. We, of course, support the process that's been put in place that was described so well by people before me, and we would, you know, encourage you to pass the plan as it was originally presented to you. The plan is an evidence-based approach, and they're using a cost-benefit analysis, which is the most logical way to make a decision, focusing on the nutrients being reduced and the cost of those nutrient removal, as you know. It's also been acknowledged that science sometimes just doesn't have the information. And when it comes to wastewater in Brevard County, that's an area where we're just lacking enough information. But MRC, Marine Resources Council, Applied Ecology, and Brevard County, your staff right here, are working to try to fill in those gaps of information. We've got a very large wastewater study underway now. It was appropriation from the legislature that we got several years ago that's underway to help prioritize where is wastewater really having the biggest impact on the lagoon. You know, those data are coming. It's still early in the process. So, you know, the information is coming, and then we'll be able to fill in, like, how many pounds of nitrogen and phosphorus will be removed if we do these projects. Right now, you know, there's a lot of speculation in trying to predict. You know, you have to, unfortunately, it's a hard time to look at the past to figure out the future, but you've got to start somewhere. You've got to look at those historical events, see what's been happening in the past, to try to understand what the likelihood of these events are to happen in the future. As you are painfully aware, the public is very suspect. They're very concerned. They've been concerned, even as they passed the sales tax, that the funding was going to be misused. So they're sensitive to it, and, you know, I'm sorry that you had to take the abuse. I never thought that you guys were being inappropriate with the funding. I don't question your questions about the plan. I encourage anybody who has, you know, is concerned about it to show up at the Citizens Oversight Committee meetings. I appreciate, Commissioner Loeb, that you were at the Marine Advisory Council meeting a couple of weeks ago to learn about what's being done by the staff in marine management. So, you know, learn as much as you can. And do encourage people that approach you to go through the process, so they're not kind of like almost a hidden door, you know? Show up at the Citizens Oversight Committee, get on the agenda, and talk so we can all hear what everybody has to say. The last point I'd like to make is that the only, nitrogen and phosphorus are the things being regulated right now, and we've reported on the health of the lagoon in terms of nitrogen and phosphorus. I hope you all have our Indian River Lagoon State of the Update report next year's, I mean, this year's is coming out soon. But you all are also, you know, required by law to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus, and that's why your plan is focusing on it. That's all I got. Thank you.
That took a lot. William Delucia, and then Mark Ryan. William's not here.
Yes, I scared him off.
I think you did. He was one of the Facebook... Oh, is this him?
No, no.
Oh, you're Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up, Mark. Sorry.
Expedite your meeting for you.
You're not William? You want to be the guy, the Facebook poster?
I don't want to be William. No, thank you. My apologies, William. I do not want to be William.
After Mark, we have Diane Shomar. Shomar, Shomar.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. First and foremost...
Name and address, please.
Mark Ryan, City Manager, Indian Harbor Beach.
Thank you.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. I want to apologize for somehow, some way, the community as a whole has not seen the work you do and has treated you like you have been on social media. That's wrong. You're a public servant and don't deserve to be treated that way, and I apologize, because I'm ashamed. But first, now, let me go on to my comments. The muck removal issue is an issue that we're dealing with, the counties are dealing with. The muck removal issue is an issue that we're dealing with, the county's dealing with. You've gotten appropriations from the legislature over $40 million. Indian Harbor Beach and Sally Beach have made a similar application to the legislature. It's in the works now. So we're trying to dredge canals in our communities to remove the muck and Dr. Teffrey's talked about the benefits of the muck removal. I'm excited about the program tonight that you're going to emcee, Mr. Commissioner Loebur. I really am because I canceled our council meeting because I want my elected official to come hear that dialogue.
I may bring you up with me. Careful.
I'm okay with that. I want to learn just like you do, but we want to be able to move forward. We want to dredge the canals. Indian Harbor Beach was ground zero for some of the discharges, not only from the hurricane, but pre-hurricane with there's malfunctions to the force main that got replaced. So I'm not only removing muck that's got silt and sediment and nutrients, but I'm also removing some of that stuff that settled to the bottom from those discharges. So this appropriation of sales tax will benefit our community in that we're going to the legislature for appropriation, that we're going to say, hey legislature, we have to get in the game. We have a local match. So we ask you to consider moving forward, but I am excited about tonight. Again, I canceled the council meeting so that my elected officials can come learn and listen just like you are and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for hanging out. Diana Shomar and after Diana, we have Todd Griggs.
And I just to comment, please don't feel a need to apologize. We're all, we've been, worse has been done. We know what we sign up for, so it doesn't bother us like you think. I think the frustration is just the rumor and how it just snowballed and how it just got so completely out of control, but that's the stuff we don't like. We can handle the criticism. That's, it comes with the territory, but yeah, to just, I didn't want anybody to feel bad for us because we're tougher than we look.
I don't know. Let them feel bad for us.
For politicians, they won't.
My name is Diana Shomar. I live on Central Merritt Island on a canal that I haven't seen the bottom of for two years. I don't know what event caused that, but something happened because it always before it would get cloudy, it would clear up and then it would get cloudy again and then it would clear up again and that last time, it never cleared up. I want to bring up a future potential problem and that is flesh-eating diseases. I don't know if anybody's looked into that, but I did and in the last 10 years, there have been 346 reported cases of Vibrio vulnificus, which is one of the flesh-eating diseases. Of those 346 cases in Florida, 99 people died. It's a serious concern because Brevard County led the state in deaths. We had nine deaths in Brevard County due to that disease. Besides death from that disease, the next most common occurrence is an amputation. So we are dealing with what I consider an emergency, a serious, serious an emergency. And I think every resource this county has that can be diverted to handling the infrastructure, the muck, the, maybe the relocation of some manatees, everything we've got needs to be thrown at this problem. And I've got one idea. We have these CRAs, which I'm inherently against, but they are in place and the last count, I knew there were 22 of them. They, they are already set up to take applications. Their work could be just diverted to these septic tank situations. If we had a septic tank that was approved to replace an old system, let them make their matching grants to these homeowners that have been identified to go towards helping that problem. If they're not willing to divert their energies, if they're done away with, there's a $30 million price tag that goes with them that could still be used for the same purpose. Another, real quickly, we did our own zero scape in our backyard. There's no company here putting in fake grass in yards. We had a paver company come in, prepare it for pavers and then my husband and I ordered, had ordered the grass. We put it down. It requires no water. It requires no fertilizer. It requires no pesticide. It is beautiful all the time. It's perfect and we're going to do our front yard the same way by choice. And I think if we had companies that actually performed the service, we'd get more people making that choice and we need to encourage people to do that. And I knew I wouldn't have enough time. Three minutes just isn't enough time. I thought and thought and thought about this and it's frustrating to try to.
Thank you.
Only say three minutes.
Todd Griggs and after Todd, Jim McKnight.
Hello again.
Hello there.
My name's Todd Griggs. I live in Melbourne. I wanted to, I came in for one subject. I didn't think it got resolved, but I was here listening to this and I just was inspired to speak again. So I wanted to give you a little bit of my background. A couple of years ago, several years ago, I was employed by GE to be a commission engineer for their water treatment plants and water treatment programs. I'm here to tell you that the industry has changed dramatically. There's new technology that's outstanding and I'm not sure if you pursued it, but know that our company would be more than happy to come down and give you a proof of concept and give you some preliminary budgetary kind of ideas and stuff like that. But I believe this lagoon cleanup, I think it's needed, but I think you're treating the symptoms, you're not treating the cause. And I have to push back quite a bit, the fact that you guys are not, no longer doing smoke testing since 17 years. That's basic maintenance. You get funded enough to do typical, basic maintenance like that. So in light of you not being able to predict a leak or the size of the leak, yeah, you're acting like an ostrich. You're putting your head in the ground. You need to have that smoke testing. You need to identify where the most potential gallon leakage would be and then you need to plan and budget for future plans to be able to fix those. They don't have to be fixed overnight, but you have to come up with a plan to fix over a year plan, you know, like a five-year plan. And if you're not doing that, then you're just, you're fooling yourself. You're just going to dump more sewage in the lagoons? We're going to dump more money into cleanups and it's a bucket full of money that's just never going to end. And I don't think you're approaching it in the right, correct direction personally. So I think you need to do a little more fact-finding before you make decisions. I like the fact that you've set aside some funds, once you determine better options, but I think you need to do some due diligence and fact-finding before you come up with a decision where you're going to spend those funds because just cleaning up the symptoms is not going to solve the problem for future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim McKnight and then Grover Gregory.
Thank you Chairman. I'm Jim McKnight. I'm the City Manager of the City of Cocoa Beach. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Loebur for taking the time to come and go through our plan to see how we operate, see what we're doing, asked lots of questions, some that were difficult to answer.
Thank you.
But that's part of it. So secondly, I'm not going to apologize for what y'all had happen, but I do want you to know that Wake Up Cocoa Beach has been corrected. I did it myself to say that was a false rumor. So sometimes we need to help you with that type of unfortunate information. I came today because I'm not sure where we're at on projects that affect the City of Cocoa Beach. Our muck dredging has been a success. We started in December of 2015 and while canals, I understand, have houses on them, they're also the main entry point of these nutrients coming into the system. If you don't touch your canals, you're not really, in my opinion, addressing the problem. So we're trying to figure out where we're at because the project we have in will allow us to complete all of the dredging in the areas that were established for the City of Cocoa Beach by the end of 2020. And if we don't get the funding, then we're going to have a demobilization and then a remobilization and we know that's costly as well. So we really need to continue to move the process forward. We're trying to be a speedboat and not a barge on this process as much as we can. Beyond that, we have a sewer system project in. As you know, we're an AWT plant. We're going beyond our permit with improvements that will be made, including addressing reclaimed water system that has been one that has kind of led the state, making some additional improvements to that and the way the treatment's done prior to it entering onto grass in our different communities. One thing I want to say about the sewer systems was this. I think you've talked about the trigger and the way that it was sold previously, Mr. Fine did. I never heard that, so maybe I'm not in the loop like I think I am, but certainly there are opportunities, but you can't base it on that if you don't know you have that and that's the problem. But sewer systems are utilities, okay? Utilities, I've been City Manager in two locations, Rockledge and Cocoa Beach. We have R and R for that. Replacement and renewal, you put the funds aside and right here, I will show you, this is the 2014 plan for the City of Cocoa Beach. We did the entire system analysis and we replaced through slip lining one-third of the pipes, okay? That's 13 miles of our 39 miles of gravity. And we also updated that last year, so we're going to move forward with more replacement. It has to be a part of your system. Just as, you know, certain things don't seem to meet the smell test for why we're doing that, I think we have to make sure. I think putting money in infrastructure is a good thing, but I think it too may need a trigger, as you talked about, where it's a matching type. We shouldn't let utilities off in that area. So I'm going to end with that. I don't want to take any more time, but thank you for your time.
Commissioner Loebur?
Just real briefly, I want to thank you as well. Your staff was great at the wastewater treatment plan. I'll tell you, this is not a slight to Brevard County by any means, but your municipal plan's nicer than any plan I've seen that's, well, heck, forget county, anywhere else. I'll just put it that way. I didn't anticipate going in there. I was going to be as impressed as I was leaving there. So you definitely have things figured out over there the right way. I appreciate it.
Thank you and hopefully we're going to make it better with this project.
Good, I hope so. Thank you.
Grover Gregory and after Grover, Eric Ziegler.
Hi, I'm Grover Gregory from Rockledge Drive Incorporated. I want to thank you guys for the time you're spending to look into these issues, but I have a question. If, if you know of, there are other sources that are readily available to remove muck, to pay for a project that we currently are allocating 200 million to remove muck, is there some other way to get the muck out? Because I don't get a bill in my mail that says, you know, $3 at the bottom for muck removal. I do have one that says sewage, you know, waste disposal, water use, et cetera. Isn't it the place of the sewage wastewater departments and that authority that they have to collect money? Aren't they the right ones to collect the money to improve the infrastructure? It just seems to me like we're going for the easy pot that already got approved by the voters, but I think in the voters' minds and certainly in mine and in all the arguments I had with people to convince them to vote for the sales tax, that this money was going to be strictly governed by the science. And I think that the basis of pounds nitrogen removed is an objective basis that encouraged the voters that there would be no other influences in this process, that we really want to get the bang for the buck. So as soon as we start using money that really should come from a different source to, you know, to fix things that are not removing nitrogen in the most efficient way, I think that's where we run into the issue of can citizens trust the process? We want to trust the process. I think that's why there was the Citizens Oversight Board. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, question.
Thank you guys for hanging out so long.
He has a question for you.
Just real briefly, I understand where you're coming from and I think you raise a good, valid point, but I think what the Commission is trying to do is to make best use of the funds consistent with the requirements that we have for those funds. I wouldn't say it's the low-hanging fruit so much as we can, we can achieve the objectives that were set out for the funds and I'm not going to penalize a project because it also happens to be a utility project if that project is the best use of the funds to improve the lagoon. I'm not trying to raid the sorrel basket to help utilities out, but if we happen to help utilities out, I'm not going to hold it against utilities that they're benefiting from something that also is helping the lagoon. You know, I look at the investment in infrastructure as something of insurance where you know you're going to get a better return immediately, so it's kind of almost inconsistent with it, but it's almost like insuring a drunk driver instead of a driver. Most drivers are going to get into some sort of an accident or a fender bender at some point in time, but it's not absolutely certain. With a drunk driver, if you have a drunk driver on the streets 24 hours a day that doesn't sleep, doesn't eat, doesn't do anything but drive, they're going to get into accidents. How many, I don't know. How soon, I don't know. They could have two in a day or two in five minutes or one in a year, but we've got essentially a situation where I would almost analogize the sewage system and the infrastructure to be like a drunk driver out on the roads. We have the opportunity to insure this drunk driver to offset the costs that are going to be incurred, namely to avoid them altogether. And my goal is to ensure that we don't have to figure out with scientific precision down the road, well, how many millions of pounds of nitrogen did we end up having these inadvertent discharges result in in the lagoon? Because if we have those numbers, that means we've done something wrong in the first place by having allowed those leaks to occur. So I share your concern and I think insofar as which particular projects are going to be the recipients of that money that's being put on hold right now, one thing I do want to highlight is it's going back to the COC for recommendations. It's not automatically, and I'm not going to say that there's no possibility that 100% of the money being set aside is going to go to infrastructure. I doubt it intuitively, but somewhere between 0 and 100% is going to go to infrastructure. It may be that some of that money goes back to demucking. I don't know and if so, how much, I really don't know. It depends on what they come back with and what basis they have for the recommendations they make. I can tell you, even if it's something that's 100% infrastructure, if they come back and they don't have a sound basis for it, I may well question it further at that point. In fact, I will question it further at that point. I think everyone's trying to make the best use of the limited funds that are available to achieve the objectives that are set out, but I just, you know, and I've heard other folks say something similar, so I don't, I don't direct this just to you, but I just want people to understand, it's not that we're doing this for utilities, it's that utilities happens to have an incidental benefit or an impact positively by us doing what's otherwise good for the lagoon. So that's, that's where I'm coming from and I just don't want that to be misperceived.
I understand that, but I think that if you looked into the enthusiasm of the public for cleaning up that lagoon, I think you would find the same enthusiasm. People are willing to pay. Some people are ideologically opposed to raising any kind of government, you know, tax or anything.
I see the enthusiasm that's incited when we dump raw sewage in the lagoon just as intently.
Yes, those are momentary things. I would ask you to remember that we have 60 years of history of dumping raw sewage through eight-inch pipes.
Which is terrible.
Into that lagoon and that's what we need to get out and I don't see any other source of money to do it. So when you take the money away that the county, that we have approved to get the muck out, you know, we're not.
That's the thing. It wasn't approved solely to get the muck out. That's one of many components. And I think everyone's said thus far that there's no single silver bullet and I agree and there needs to be some demucking.
Okay, we're going to call the next one because it's getting late.
Okay.
Mr. Ziegler, Eric Ziegler.
Thank you.
All right, I get to throw another monkey wrench into the mix for the lagoon plan, but back in 2016, I was following the flows.
Can you, can you say your name and?
My name is Eric Ziegler. I'm a Brevard County resident, so I live here in Melbourne, Florida, but I work with a group out of South Florida and we spent 2016 following our flows. The image that I have on this poster board is kind of an interesting image because it shows our lagoon completely neon green in the middle of February 2016. I'm sure you guys have seen this one. Where it comes from is South Florida.
Mike, Mike.
If you just had a audio.
Because I can't hear you.
No problem. Where it comes from is South Florida and what we were doing in 2016 was following the flows. I was actually in Sebastian Inlet in 2000, or February 2nd, when we watched it start flowing out of the inlet. Once we started realizing that this was part and parcel of our problem, it was too late and in 22 days, it decimated 65 tons of marine life in the north end of the lagoon. Doing that, we started testing the water and realized that we were dealing with liceate and we were dealing with massive amounts of nutrients coming out of South Florida. Now unfortunately, this kind of puts a big monkey wrench in just removing the lagoon muck from the north end of the lagoon because we're constantly getting basically nutrient load, phosphates, the muck itself is silt from the runoff from the agricultural area, which is a huge section of the state of Florida, which most people don't know because we all live on the coastline. Unfortunately, it makes a huge impact on us and every time the flows in certain scenarios, they end up in our north end of the lagoon. Once they're there, they have no way to get out. And that was why initially we were talking about some kind of a inlet system or something put into. put into to restore flow to the upper end of the lagoon. I believe that is absolutely necessary and that it will also help in removing our muck problem because we will receive greater flow rate in the north end of the lagoon, which has about a two-hundred-and-seventy-day turnover rate, which means that it takes two-hundred-and-seventy days for an amount of water in the upper end to move through the inlets. Now, that's why we are so stagnated, and the debris stays on the bottom, and the muck stays on the bottom, and it doesn't move. Down in South Florida, they open up those discharges, and the inlets that are in the South Florida area are about fifteen miles or closer together. So, that flow comes in and through tidal convection moves all that debris in and out. Once it's out, their water's crystal clear again. We never get to see that because we have basically a trap for all their stuff in the north end of the lagoon. Now, what I recommend that you guys look at, and I agree with you completely, that you need to measure twice and cut once. And what that means, my grandfather used to say that to me all the time.
Okay, you got to wrap it up.
Check your research and do it again. And then take that second time and make your final decision on what plans to be made. I totally agree with Dr. Treffrey that...
Okay, we have to cut you off, because it wouldn't be fair if I let you just talk off.
Go ahead.
As interesting as you are, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. What I wanted to reiterate to you guys was I feel that you're on the right track and that we need to look at some larger parts of the problem, as well as the little tiny micro problems that we have in septic sinks and septic systems as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we can bring it back to the board.
Now, there's a couple of options we can, you know, and obviously everybody gets a chance if they want to speak. I think we've talked a lot this afternoon. I think if the support is there, because there's only four of us, if the support is there by three of us to support this plan moving forward, we can always bring it back again to what to discuss, to discuss on what we do with that other hundred million, because I think we're probably going to be pretty split, given that Commissioner Tobias is not here, so we're going to be at a stalemate anyway. I think the COC knows where the majority of commission stands as far as using some of that money for infrastructure and stormwater projects. I think we at least made that pretty clear. But I think that what Commissioner Loeb was proposed, you know, moving forward with almost, almost like the majority of the plan, gets them on track and, as many people already stated, you know, allows them to move forward with their grants and with their matching funds, and it doesn't hold up any projects and stuff. So, I mean, I'm okay with that myself. I have to support it just as it is.
Without any modifications or too long of a discussion.
Real short discussion. The only thing, and this was actually brought to my attention by a constituent earlier today, it didn't occur to me, there was a portion of discussion that we had in a prior meeting prior to the entire plan coming up pertaining to advertising. There were five different categories. I believe the COC basically said that three of them were more critical than the other two. I don't know if folks want to put those two that were deemed non-critical, and I may be using slightly different terminology.
I'd prefer not to, because I think we all decide.
Do you want me just to put that in with a hundred and basically say, let's hold off on those two and then?
I would say hold off on those because the board voted on that item. So, I think that to put those back in is going against the actions of the board.
Yeah, I'm happy to make the motion to approve this as listed in the agenda, with the exception, and help me out if you would, Dr. Windsor. I'm sorry to pick you on you, but you're in the front row. I believe it was the fertilizer, the grass clip, no, no, I'm sorry. The fertilizer, the grass clippings, and the septic, those were the three that you all thought were the most critical, right? Okay, so let's approve it with the exception then of stormwater pond maintenance and excess irrigation, advertising funds. Not to say we're not going to approve some portion of that in the future, I just don't know, but since the board voted on that before and it was brought to my attention, again, let's just put those two items in hold, so that would be a hundred thousand dollars for that. But otherwise, I'd move to approve it with that one, one small addendum.
Okay, does everybody get that?
Can you go ahead and just state your motions?
Sure. Let me pull it up here so I don't misspeak, because it's a...
And if it's not clear, just holler this way.
Actually, can I borrow your hard copy? I can pull it up on the screen, but, thank you. It's like mine. So, it says that I'm seeking, what I'm doing is moving to approve all non-muck removal and non-interstitial water treatment items contained within the 2019 plan update as proposed by the Oversight Committee, as well as an initial maximum of one-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars toward muck removal and/or interstitial water treatment. The remaining funds, roughly an additional hundred million dollars, which were proposed by the Oversight Committee to be allocated toward either muck removal and/or interstitial water treatment, will remain unallocated until such time as the county commission takes further action. This motion does not restrict the county commission from allocating some, all, or none of the remaining unallocated funds toward muck removal. Interstitial water treatment and/or infrastructure is deemed appropriate by the county commission. It's contemplated that the Oversight Committee will provide recommendations in a timely manner pertaining to the unallocated portion of funds for county commission evaluation consideration, that with a one caveat, that we're leaving out for the time being the stormwater pond maintenance and excess irrigation, advertising.
Education portion.
Education portion that was brought up previously, and we had voted to, I believe, the table until we revisited it.
Yeah, we'll second that without repeating that.
Okay, I don't blame you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb, a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm all for that. And as I said last time, I'm good with anything as long as you guys have direction. I don't want to just let that hundred million dollars sit. We need to use it, and we need to do both. We need to do infrastructure, we need to do muck removal.
Yeah, I don't think anybody wants it to sit.
My question then is, how is the decision going to be made going forward on how to spend that hundred million dollars?
It'll come back to us with the recommendation.
They're just going to give, okay.
Right, I don't want to step on their, basically on their hands at this point. I'd like to give them the opportunity.
Because I think they know, they've already obviously got pretty clear direction. I mean, because they actually pay attention to what we do. And they know kind of where the majority of us want to see those funds go, and I think that that's, just like the general direction they took before with the education stuff, they scaled it back.
Let's do it.
Because they had some information. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four-one.
All right.
Woo-hoo. All right.
Want to go through all that again?
And it's still at word twenty-six.
God, we're going to just like, I'm going to start telling you guys, zip it. All right. We jumped around so much, I just have to make sure I don't miss anything. J-one. I don't, we have one card on this. Item J-one, Grover Gregory.
Oh, that was, because I didn't know where you were.
Okay. All right, so I don't have any comment cards. Eden, did Commissioner Tobias leave his ranking sheet for his?
No.
Okay. I mean, I guess we could just hand him what we've got, if he's not here. Yeah. Mine's kind of messy. Did you put your name on it? Does it matter?
Do we need to put a name on it?
Yeah, probably.
Can I ask a question?
Question?
I just put, look how sloppy I crossed mine out.
Is Mr., Ms. Virginia, is Mr. Higgins no longer in the, is he part of it? Was, I know, I thought two of them were disqualified or were no longer interested.
Your question was about Mr. Higgins?
On the technology members, you've got one that's disqualified, no reference. Was there another one on? No.
No, just that one.
Thank you.
Okay, so rather than have Ms. Virginia wait, we'll move on and come back to this? Oh, did you fill it out already?
Yeah.
Oh, that was fast. Never mind. And we'll move on, and then we'll come back and make the appointments based on the rankings. Give Virginia a few minutes to get that calculated. All right, miscellaneous, item five. Wait, J-five.
Madam Chair, this is a resolution supporting Brevard County's preference of maintenance and operation policy for Mathers Bridge. This is an item that's been going on for two years, and primarily, I brought this up, I spoke to John Denninghoff two years ago in February about the maintenance on Mathers Bridge. And I'll let him, Mr. Denninghoff, you want to just give us a brief synopsis of the maintenance and why it's important to limit the amount of times that thing opens and closes?
The bridge, as most of us are probably aware, is a pivot bridge, and every time the bridge opens, a great deal of gears and hydraulic fluid and pumps and motors start running, and it swings a bridge open. There's a main bearing on the bridge, which also wears each time the bridge is open and closed. If it's open frequently, it heats up, and that causes premature aging of the equipment and the materials, including that main bearing. The, and if the bridge is open on an on-demand basis, then every time a boat or vessel comes, approaches the bridge and the bridge, vehicular traffic has to stop, the bridge is swung open, and the boat is allowed to traverse through the channel, and then the bridge is swung back closed, and the traffic is able to move on. The, so, one of the advantages of going to an on-half hour and hourly schedule to open the bridge rather than on-demand is that it will allow more cooling time for all of the equipment to cool down, as well as it has the potential of significantly reducing the number of times a bridge has to swing, both open and closed, of course. And so, we think we can save some money there. There's also the potential that we could actually go to an automated system, which would reduce the amount of manpower for bridge tenders that are necessary to operate the bridge. And so, that would reduce our maintenance costs dramatically over the course of the lifespan of the bridge. And to replace that main bearing, you have to remove the bridge structure in order to replace that bearing. So, losing that bearing is a big deal. So, those are the advantages of going to an on-schedule opening rather than on-demand opening.
Okay, and so, with that information, I thought it would be a good idea to reach out to the Coast Guard to see what would be involved in doing that. So, then a lot of emotion got involved, as we know how two sides, and one side was that the boaters screamed because they wanted the convenience of being able to approach the bridge and have it open when they got there. The motorists screamed because, and I can tell you, I've been on that bridge, when it opened, and there was a boat here right next to the bridge, and there was a boat not more than a few hundred yards away, and instead of waiting for both boats to get there, the bridge opened, closed, and then when the other boat got close enough, it opened again. Well, I sat there through both of those. And so, I thought, you know, this, and I took pictures, and I gave them to Mr. Denninghoff, and I said, here's the boat in the background. It opened, let the first boat through, closed, let some of the cars through, and then opened again so that the second boat could come through. Well, I can tell you that I have a friend that has a forty-six footer that he and his girlfriend bought a month or two ago. They left Melbourne last week and went down to Key Largo. You can imagine how many boats there are on the intercoastal river. Every single one, he reported back to me, they wanted to do that because they wanted to get the feel of what the whole waterway looked like. So, they went all the way down, and when they got there, they said, we'll never do that again because all the bridges are on timed, and some are half-hour, some are hour. Some are fifteen minutes, some are forty-five minutes. But they're always half-hour on and half-hour off. And he said, but there's no problem, everybody knows it, so you just sit there in your boat until it opens. So, if you show up five minutes after it's opened, you just wait twenty-five minutes, and then you have to go. Furthermore, the Coast Guard has been told by a lot of local boaters that this is a safety issue. Well, the Coast Guard and Wayne Justice, who is a retired rear admiral, says that that's hogwash because, one, the banana river there at Mathers Bridge is not a thoroughfare. It's not like the intercoastal. The intercoastal is like a turnpike or ninety-five on the waterway. All the boats that go north and south go on the intercoastal. The only boats that traverse Mathers Bridge are local boats. So, if you're a local boater, you know what time the bridge opens, you gauge your departure from your home accordingly and your return accordingly. There's no safety issue because there's no shoals, there's no shallow water, it's relatively protected, so there's not a lot of wind, and there is, of course, no current. So, there's no safety issue involved. It's a convenience issue. So, now we're two years in, and the Coast Guard's ready to make a decision, and Wayne Justice said that he will take our recommendation, whichever we decide, directly to the powers that be in Jacksonville, because he knows them. And I strongly submit that it would save the county a lot of money over time if we made this an on-time, half-hour, an hour opening. So, it's up to the board's discretion to do that or...
I'm going to go with public comment, just so we can bring it back to the board. Vince Lamb?
No.
You have the lone card.
I said never before, twice in one day. And I was here for the aquarium last time, but I stayed until ten o'clock.
The one and only.
But anyway, Vince Lamb, South Merritt Island, actually Dragon Point, right in the middle of this issue. Lived there for forty-five years. I have actually lived through two complete rebuildings of the Mathers Bridge center span, which, one of them, I got trained to be a first responder because the fire department couldn't get there in time. So, anyway, you know, I've got quite a bit of interest in this. We went through a six-month period of a trial period where the bridge opened from the half-hour and the hour, and the boaters survived. It was interesting that some of the ones that have, you know, flipped down tops actually learned how to get their tops down so they could get under the bridge. The others learned how to read their watches, so they were okay with getting there. I don't think there was any great problem for the boaters. The, you know, a lot of the traffic on Mathers Bridge is commercial of yard services and construction contractors and that kind of thing that are being stopped by six to ten minutes every time the bridge opens. So, you know, having it once in a half-hour, I think works out for everybody, and of course, you know, I've heard this, it certainly makes sense that opening and closing frequently is going to wear it out again. I hope that doesn't happen in my lifetime, but anyway, I strongly encourage you to vote in favor of the half-hour openings and to send your message to the Coast Guard. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Loeb?
I just want to say, with respect to this particular item, the only input that I'm aware of that I've received or my offices received from any constituents have been in favor of doing exactly what Commissioner Smith wants, so I plan on supporting him in this.
I'm in the same boat. I would, you know, without having any, like, huge data, thirty minutes sounds probably like the smart way to go.
Well, and like I said, the biggest reason I can tell you to do this is because Mathers Bridge is not a thoroughfare.
And it's a lot of wear and tear.
So, there's not traffic like there is on the intercoastal. And the intercoastal, where you have lots and lots of traffic, they do half-hour, hour, or fifteen-minute, forty-five-minute, because boaters can work with a time if they know that the time is going to be consistent. So, it would save us a lot of money going forward, and it just made a lot of sense to me.
It does.
So, I would like to make a motion that we notify the U.S. Coast Guard that we are in favor of timed bridge openings.
Second.
Let's do it.
You do it, you did.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Right. Do we have those?
Yes.
Okay. Is somebody going to read it? Oh.
Thank you.
You can, or you want me to do it?
Yeah, let's have you do it, since you tallied it.
So, the first order of business is, was to rank the candidates, which you've done, and I've provided that back to you. So, for the county seats that were vacant, for technology, your top-ranked candidate is John Lesnar, and for education and outreach, your top-ranked candidate is Melissa Martin. So, then in addition to filling those two seats, you also need to confirm the League of Cities vacancies, and their recommendations were Dennis Basil for the real estate alternate seat, and Laura Lee Thompson for the tourism alternate seat.
Do you need a motion to approve these?
Yes.
So moved. Beat you to it.
Beat you to it.
Did you guys get all that? We'll give you the list too if that helps. Motion, motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I don't think any items have been passed, skipped over. I think we're all good.
Good job.
And quite the day. All right, moving on to public comments. I only have one card and that's William Deluccia, Deluccia? Sorry if I said that wrong. Name and address, please.
Uh, it's William Deluccia, D-E-L-U-C-C-I-A, four sixteen Melbourne Avenue, Indian Atlantic, Florida.
Three.
And no, I wasn't scared, I actually had to go do my day job. Thank you. I'm here today because, um, I'm gonna keep it simple. Um, I, I have an area of expertise, you all have an area of expertise, expertise. All these people, well, they've all bailed. Most of the people here have areas of expertise. We have to entrust the experts in their fields to do their jobs and come up with the data, come up with the facts and trust those facts. I'm here because there's been a lot of concern all throughout the public with regard to the half cent tax and I apologize that I did miss the time for this, but my short public comment is that as a concerned citizen and as a taxpayer who pays a lot of taxes, I have two properties in this county, um, and having voted for that tax and, and pushed for it and wanting, having wanted that money to be spent on the proper areas, it scares the citizens of this county to death to hear that there may be, um, alternates and where that money was going to go as opposed to where it was originally intended to go. So, when the Citizens Oversight Committee, um, plan is rejected, it puts a real shock factor into the public. My only thing is with this area of expertise that I've started with is that we need to entrust the scientists in this community who have provided that data. For instance, some of the data that I originally heard from Virginia Barker on the early days of, before this, um, Indian River Lagoon Coalition Plan was put together, was that seventy percent of the nutrient loads in the Indian River are attributable to fertilizer loads. Yet, today, when I was here earlier, we had an hour-long monologue by Representative Fine about the compromised infrastructure of sewer pipes and wastewater, which is important. But if you're seventy percent of your nutrient loads in the river are coming from a source such as fertilizer and land usage, why aren't we addressing the bigger problem instead of talking at length and diverting funds potentially to projects that should be lower down the totem pole? It's a disproportionate money that would go to, to projects that don't have as much bang for the buck. I just don't understand why we wouldn't do a hierarchy of needs of where this money should be spent and look at the science behind it before we go to diverting these funds elsewhere.
Commissioner Loeb?
There's an elephant in the room and I would not be able to sleep tonight were I not to address it. You talked about a moment ago what scares to death the public. One of the things that scares to death the public is someone spreading a false rumor that inconveniences countless people and costs, I don't know how many tens or hundreds of hours, out of well-intentioned folks, including county staff time. Let me ask you, because the best I could find, you and someone who shares your surname, were the originators of that particular rumor. So, tell me if you would...
What wasn't a rumor?
What wasn't a rumor? That we were gonna fund a road in Palm Bay?
No, not a road. Infrastructure projects that were yet to be disclosed.
What was that?
Infrastructure projects with undisclosed money and undisclosed percentages of those funds going towards it.
Well, what led you to believe that?
Several scientists that I know in the community led me to believe that.
How did they lead you to believe that specifically?
How would I get the information if I wasn't led to believe that? I have an area of expertise that has nothing to do with this. Where would I get that information?
Well, it seems like you made it up and, and just tried to spread falsity because you can't point to a single individual.
No, I didn't make it up and I would never throw those people under the bus, but I can tell you that there's, if you look at the science and trust the scientists in this room and the scientists that were in this room before, when it was full, those are the people that are the experts that should be telling the county commissioners where to spend that money, just like the Citizens Oversight Commission that has three scientists on that commission.
They don't, they don't always, I'm sorry, they don't always agree collectively. And many scientists with the same or even more scientific background have given their opinions as well. It's not that anybody here wanted to scrap the plan, but when you accuse a commission or a commission body of potentially misappropriating funds, that's like basically accusing somebody of a crime.
Did you look up the definition of misappropriation?
Okay.
Because there's several definitions and one of them is misuse.
Okay.
Misuse. And in, in, in the public's eye, the Citizens Oversight Committee...
That wasn't the intention of that. Intention was to incite emotion and when you...
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
The Citizens Oversight Committee plan was rejected by you.
I think we've dispelled it.
If, if I may just...
We sent it back, we didn't reject the entire plan. I wish you would have watched the meetings because if scientists told you that, that we were gonna divert money to unknown projects in Palm Bay...
Not unknown, that, no, excuse me.
Or unplanned projects in Palm Bay.
Unplanned projects.
No one ever on this board has ever said that during any public meeting or in any public forum ever.
And that's why you can't point to a source for that other than yourself?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Unless a scientist had told you that gave you misinformation.
I'm not gonna tell you who told me this information.
Yeah, but we're not, it's not productive.
Well, if, if you'd like, I have, I have some tin foil, you can make a hat out of it.
Oh, you know what? And I heard that you said something...
We're done, we're done.
Can I say one more thing? I don't think it's...
We're probably not going anywhere positive with this.
No, I, I appreciate your time and I understand that you shouldn't...
Well, you don't appreciate everyone else's time apparently.
And I'm sure you probably looked for a mugshot of me, but I've not been arrested.
Haven't.
But you were trying to put mugshots of other people on...
We're done.
Which other people?
All righty, that was fun. Okay, uh, it's obviously a very emotional, passionate subject. Okay, so let's... Mr. Abate?
Uh, no report.
Ms. Bentley, I'm sorry, I do have a report. On February twenty-first, twenty nineteen, the county manager received a certified letter from an attorney allegedly representing the dissolved Children's Services Council. They're seeking to invoke the governmental dispute resolution procedures provided in Chapter one sixty-four Florida statutes. There's a thirty-day time limit under the statute to respond. We've requested a, uh, an extension, we haven't received a response. So, in an abundance of caution, I'm requesting permission for staff to attend an initial conflict assessment meeting if no costs are incurred by the county for the former Children's Services Council and all other rights can be preserved. That's all. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. And I, and I, I would vote, but I just want to be clear that we, as, as a, as an elected body and as your, you as our representative, we are not even acknowledging that the board exists, correct?
Right, that's the preservation of rights.
I just want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in, I know we talked about it, but, all right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero.
I expect to be reporting back in a few weeks when we have a few more facts gathered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I have just one thing to say in conjunction with all the discussion we've had today of Indian River Lagoon and on and on. I want to give a shout-out to Sheriff Ivy and Keith Winston from the zoo. About six or eight months ago, I was speaking with Keith Winston about projects with the zoo and one of the things he mentioned that has had profound effects was the oyster mats. And the problem that he said they had was, uh, one, getting oyster shells and two, getting labor because it's very labor-intensive to put those oyster mats together. So, I thought about it and I had a eureka moment. I thought, you know, Sheriff Ivy's always talking about how much labor that he has at his disposal at the county jail. So, I thought if I could get him involved and if he would be willing, um, maybe we could get those inmates to start making oyster mats. So, fast forward to, um, tomorrow, Sheriff Ivy, after working with the zoo, is going